The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, will you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes. Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Hersog.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Howgie.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Report from the Planning Director, EJ.
Good morning, EJ Baldi, Planning Services Division. This will be brief. I probably didn't even have to come up here, but the only thing we need to talk about are upcoming schedules for April Planning Commission. Next meeting is scheduled for April 11th. That's going to be here in Auburn. We have a couple of big items on there. Plaster Retirement Residence in Granite Bay, that's a 145-unit residential care facility. Regional University Specific Plan Amendment is also going to be coming forward on that day. And then with a couple of smaller items, map modification, extensions of time. So that's the 11th. And then April 28th, we're going to be here in Auburn. So we're going to do a live video feed to Tahoe because we have a couple Tahoe items. For the West Slope project, we have the Quarry Ridge Professional Office Park, another Granite Bay project that will be going on that day. And then for Tahoe, there's a Red Dog chairlift replacement. I believe that's in Squaw Valley, and Tahoe extension of time. So we continue to do this every two weeks. We have a pretty full schedule, and I don't see any letup anytime soon. So lots of documents coming your way for review. And that's all I have. Pretty brief. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Now would be the time for public comment. Anybody wishing to make a comment on anything that is not on today's agenda? Now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to see removed and discussed separately? Seeing none, ask for a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a couple of seconds. Roll call, please.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Howgie and a second by Commissioner Nader. So Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Nader. Mr. Howgie.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now we get to breathe easy for about a couple of minutes till we get to 10:05. And then we'll do the Newcastle Wedding Gardens Conditional Use Permit Modification.
Very efficient.
Too efficient.
Okay. We've reached the 10:05 mark, so now we have the Newcastle Wedding Gardens Conditional Use Permit Modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Delaney Farnham with the Planning Services Division. Today, we request your commission to consider approval of the Newcastle Wedding Gardens Conditional Use Permit Modification. A bit about the project. The project site is located at 950 Taylor Road in Newcastle. It is approximately one mile west of the Highway 193 and Taylor Road intersection, and approximately a mile off the Newcastle Road exit on Interstate 80. Adjacent land uses immediately to the east include the cemetery, which is operated by the Newcastle Rockland Gold Hill Cemetery District. And just next door to that is the Newcastle Portuguese Hall. Land uses to the north, west, and south all include residential land uses. The property is approximately 11.8 acres. It is zoned RAB 100, residential agriculture with a minimum combining build site of 100,000 square feet. All adjacent properties are zoned similarly with the RAB 100. The requested conditional use permit modification is requesting to change the total number of allowed events from 60 events to 59 events per year, and to allow year-round operations. All other operations would continue to take place within the existing built areas and in accordance with the CUP and conditions of approval. The site is already a facility for weddings and special celebrations. The site plan identifies the paved parking for 63 spaces, including ADA spaces. There is a courtyard area for outdoor ceremonies, associated landscaping, and a 2,550-square-foot historic renovated barn that hosts the receptions. The project was previously restricted to operate during the dry season from April 1st to October 15th. This was due to having gravel parking. The parking has since been improved and paved to meet county standards, thus removing the need to limit operations during the dry season. This modification would not produce a net increase in the operations, but simply allow a reduced number of events to occur on a year-round basis. So staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit modification, and I will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions?
Just curious, why from 60 to 59?
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so that point, that actually came from our Environmental Health Services Division. There was a threshold. It's a kind of a new state standard where if you're at 60 events, it's going to trigger a public well. So keeping them under that threshold of 59 events keeps them under kind of today's standards for public well. So if they do choose to, down the road, do any modifications to the increased number of events, that would be one of the improvements required.
Thank you. Any other questions? Delaney, thank you very much. Would the applicant like to get up and say anything?
Manager, I'd just like to extend the amount of time that we do events. Not necessarily looking to do more, just spread it out throughout the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Looks like none. Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak regarding this?
Good morning. My name's Rex DeMartini. I live at 1133 Taylor Road. The current zoning for that, as she pointed out, was 2.3 acres residential. We are residents. It's around the wedding garden. That, we do, we are impacted by the noise coming off the wedding garden. In addition, by eliminating the restriction, it would be impossible for the county or the residents to monitor, excuse me, I've been sick, monitor the number of events at the hall. He currently does events outside of that window of April 1st, October 15th. It could lead to existing traffic, air, and pollution year-round, environmental pollution year-round to our properties. Currently, the operators held events outside that window, which I just stated. I don't want to see the CEQA requirements removed due to environmental concerns in the neighborhood. Currently, that paved parking lot, the watershed comes off of that paved parking lot into the drainage ditch and seasonal stream through a culvert and through my property. So it's bringing up additional pollutions coming off that parking lot and waters coming off that parking lot that should be addressed. Hopefully, there's no additional allowance for outdoor activities at night. It gets kind of tough to be hearing that all night long, all night long, I mean by after 10:00. Also, any additional parties, there's been events where parking has come out onto Taylor Road, blocked our driveways, parked in our private properties. That should be allowed to somehow, I don't know how you go about addressing quantities of people or overflow, but that definitely needs to be addressed. And for the quality of life of the residents, the zone neighborhood, for the environment, I would request that the Planning Commission reject the request for extended operating period, as well as reject exempting the business from the CEQA and the Plaster County environmental rules. I would just ask if you would like to have a party of 100-plus people next door to you 52 weeks out of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay. I did not mention this earlier, but we do try to limit comments to three minutes. Come on up and I'll just...
I will.
Well, when you see the yellow light come on, that's kind of your one-minute warning to gather your thoughts and wrap it up.
My biggest thought is that I'm the closest one of all these people to the barn.
Could you please state your name for the record, please?
My name is Robert William Craigel. I live at 1025 Taylor Road.
Thank you, sir.
My driveway is right across from their parking lot. I sit on my deck and I watch the cars go in and out. I know I'm retired, and I ain't spending enough time to see how many cars go by there from 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, in the PM. There's an average of eight cars a minute goes past that driveway. I shouldn't be saying this, but the police kind of ignore Taylor Road. I don't know why they don't like Taylor Road. They come out of the tunnel, which is a mile away. I've seen them coming out of there 100 miles an hour. Okay? The only thing I'm worried about is somebody going to get killed if you increase the traffic going in and out of there. The people, they don't stop and make a square or left immediate 90-degree left turn. They just catty-corner in. They catty-corner out. We've had three wrecks there in the last five years. One lady was killed. I don't want to sit there and watch people get killed for the increased amount. They need a turn lane. That's the only thing I'm worried about. Noise. We got a stinking Taylor Road with eight cars a minute. We got the railroad above it. And the only thing that I'm really worried about is people getting killed on that road, and I'm going to be sitting there like a dummy watching them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Jennings. I live at 8535 Azores Lane. Azores Lane borders the property of the wedding gardens. My house, I'm guessing, is approximately 800 feet away from the barn, just eyeballing it. And when we're up on a hill, we overlook it. I see the parking lot. I go out my front door or look out my window. I have 15 bullet points here. I probably won't get those in in three minutes. I'm going to have a couple extra minutes if that would be permissible.
Let's see how we're doing here, if you could, please.
I'm sorry?
I said, let's see how we get progressing here and how far we make it.
So as far as I understand, Greg Casella is actually the owner of the property, even though the letter we received says Matt is. And I'd just be curious to know if that's true or not. The other question, and Rex brought up some of these items, that he has gone flagrantly outside the current boundaries between October 15th and April 1st, probably between at least 10 to 20 events since October 15th of last year, and multiple events other than Friday through Sunday, which is the current restriction is. One of those events was, he said, I texted him about it. The noise is really loud. It was like a live band. And he said it was his retirement party for his dad, and the Plaster County Sheriff told him he was good till 9:00. Just really loud and really annoying. Gets in our house, we hear the bass. As many what we hear is the bass. That particular event was more. We could hear everything. Events typically or sometimes go past the stipulated time. People yelling, car noise being heard after 10:00 at night. One of the other things, on the current permit, it says that all reception celebration music shall be confined to the interior of the barn. What does that mean? Can the doors be open? Does that fall under the definition of confined? The website for the wedding garden shows photos of tables set up outside with people out there and advertises in multiple places that there is indoor/outdoor dining and entertaining. At least, let's see, at least twice, like Rex said, there's cars parked up on Taylor Road. Current permit says 120 people max. The website says 130, and that's per septic rules. How's that going to be enforced? How's the owner going to be held accountable for keeping within the use permit a number of events per year? Do we need to keep track of that? And then call, who do we get a hold of if he goes over that? And he talks about different events, not just weddings. So he's had a couple memorial services there, retirement parties, some other things. He talks about friends and family. Are those included in those 59 events? Or they go outside those 59 events? Again, like this gentleman mentioned back here, I'm out of time here. The traffic, I believe a dedicated turn lane would be indicated there because of the traffic on Taylor Road. The speed limit is 50 miles an hour. I drive 50, maybe a little 55 sometimes. I've had people pass me on that road on double yellow line multiple times. Motorcycles, cars, things like that. And the last thing I have is, what is our recourse if continued violations occur? Who do we go to? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good morning. My name is Sheila Doherty. I live at 8585 Azores Lane. It is right behind the barn. I'm probably most affected, my house, because there's a lull, and as you know, noise travels up. We are in our house many times with the windows closed, and you can hear the bass thumping, thumping, thumping. I have actually texted Matt before. Sometimes he responds, other times he does not. My concern is, who do I contact? If I'm contacting the person in charge and not hearing back from them, or not satisfied with what I hear, who do I contact? The police? The police, they've been called out once before. They said that they do not have the proper decibel reading equipment to know if they are going over that or not. Again, who do we call? My husband gets up at 3:00 AM in the morning because we try and make our mortgage, which entails him to have to drive to the Bay Area every day. And this wakes us up, keeps us up. People, when they're drinking and they leave this establishment, they're not concerned about a vehicle coming down 50 miles an hour. They pull out drunk. They hoot, they howler, they throw bottles. It is supposed to be over at 10:00 PM. I can hear the catering service clanging dishes at 10:45. Who's enforcing this? Let's see here. And there have been events where cars have been parked down Taylor Road, which again is not only a nuisance, but a danger for anyone who goes outside that white line and sideswipes all these cars that are parked there for these events that are only supposed to be for 120 people. I guarantee you, there is far more than 120 people at these events. Again, most impacted, I hear it all, and beyond the times that were agreed upon. And the open doors, I'm very concerned about that. If the event is supposed to be within the barn, how can that be if the doors are open? Two sets of French doors on the side and a big barn door in the front. So what does that mean, enclosed in the barn? Again, it is very loud, and we built our house, we saved it for many years. This is our pride and joy, to sit outside to hear the birds. It breaks my heart that it is just so loud. So I'm asking that you please reject the year-round because Matt has actually had four events in the month of March. March 29th, I texted him to say it was too loud. Again, he's outside of his dates. I never got a text back. On March 9th, people were parked out on Taylor Road because the event was so large. There was an event on March 10th, and another one again on March 16th. How is this to be enforced? So I'm asking, please, please don't make it bigger than what it already is, which is too big for what it was proposed to be initially. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Delaney, you can just answer from there. Have there been any code enforcement responses?
There have not.
No?
No.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Good morning, Chairman Moss and members of the commission. My name is Ryan Zender. I'm the supervisor for Plaster County Code Compliance. Just happened to be in the audience, and I heard some questions. We're available typically Monday through Friday to address complaints. If we have any complaint that's occurring outside of those hours, we can adjust to enforce anything that's related to the CUP. Also, we do have a decibel meters. They're sent out, the calibrator's sent out certified every year, so we have that equipment. We use it occasionally. We have a good working relationship with the sheriff's office as well, who are available outside of those hours. They also do have equipment, and we work closely together as far as trying to address complaints that are occurring in relation to noise and whatnot.
Do you have a cell phone number they can call?
No, we start off with a complaint. So if it's an ongoing, you know, event center or whatnot, they can start with the complaint, and we can look at that moving forward to address that, those issues that are ongoing.
A lot of the violations probably happen on week, or potential violations, let's say, happen on weekends. You're, obviously, you're Monday through Friday. So how do you address it if somebody comes in on Monday and said there was a violation in their opinion over the weekend? How would you address it?
Well, typically, if it's a, if it's a one-time event that's happened in the past, there's nothing that we can enforce, and it's not our goal. It's more or less we would touch bases. There is an event center that I recall, specifically where the noise complaints were received in the past. We went out, met with the property owner. That property owner showed us his noise mitigation policy, basically. We used a noise meter just to kind of get a good feel for what was going on on that property. And then moving forward from that point, we hadn't received any new noise complaints from the reporting parties. And if that happened, we would have been able to have a good idea of what the situation was going on on that property. So our goal is to get them to, if they are out of compliance in the past, our goal is to get them in compliance moving forward.
Now, you can confirm what Delaney said. You've not, none of your staff has been responded to this facility before. Is that correct?
Does not sound familiar at all, so I don't know for certain, but I don't think so.
Do you have a phone number that you can give people to call?
I have some business cards in my wallet I can hand out. I'd be glad to get in contact with those folks.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think what I was hearing there is the, they did call the sheriff, and the sheriff arrived and said he didn't have a noise meter. And so that was it. So, you know, when that happens, what do you do? I heard you say that the sheriff does have noise meters, and you have noise meters, and so, you know, was that some kind of a problem internally in the county, or, you know, I mean, is that, how do you address that?
Well, I can't speak for the sheriff's office. I do know I've worked with the sheriff's office prior with, and I know they have two noise meters, and those, I don't know where they are right now, but the understanding is there's one in their South Plaster Station and one available in their Auburn Station. The, just recently, I had a conversation with a problem-oriented policing deputy who, they specialize in ongoing problems. And we were discussing that if patrol gets a kind of a nuisance ongoing complaint, that then they can hopefully engage their pop officer, then who can communicate with us, and we can kind of look at it from, you know, strategic standpoint of when this is occurring and how we can best address the ongoing complaint. Just typically, if you have a party complaint, the sheriff's office is going to go out and ask for compliance, and then typically, that's not going to continue every weekend. But if you have an event center, then that's a pattern that's going on. So those are the ones where we can get involved and just say, you kind of address it and try to mitigate that from continuing.
I guess, I guess what I'm still struggling with is, you know, the sheriff shows up, I don't have a noise meter, and you don't hear any feedback on that, then that seems to be kind of a problem for me.
Again, I can't speak for the sheriff's office. If they have, if they don't have access to that resource, because they, that resource is somewhere, and there's lots of deputies patrolling the entire county, that, the ongoing complaint, if it's every weekend or whatever, they can, they have the resources, at least with us, to address that moving forward. But if it's a one-time event, they may or may not have access to that resource. I don't know.
So I guess I'm just thinking, you know, it's almost like the sheriff says, I don't have the noise meter, contacts the dispatcher, dispatcher contacts you, and you're aware that there's a complaint going on. Then the process doesn't work that way?
No. So we would, we would require a complaint, and then we can address it moving forward. We wouldn't be, we're not on call for something that's happening right then and there. But they can pass that information on to us and say, okay, so we're aware that this is potentially a pattern, and then we can adjust our schedule or work with the sheriff's office about going out the next weekend, which, for example, we have some businesses that advertise on their calendar saying that they're having an event upcoming. And so if that's necessary, we can show up and record or, you know, document what that event is, and then follow up with that business saying that they need a temporary outdoor event permit that they didn't have or something like that. So we can, we can definitely follow, follow up and then mitigate those, those issues moving forward. The sheriff's office may not have the resources of the time to go out and do a full-on noise complaint versus a lot of times, they typically just ask for compliance at that time.
Well, I understand. What I'm hearing, though, is, in this particular place, well, we've had three people talking about noise problems. And it sounds like the county's not aware of the issue. So, I don't know.
I can only speculate.
That may be feedback for you.
Right. I'm definitely happy to engage them to get a complaint if they have not submitted one. If they have, I'll definitely look into that and why, or what has happened with that complaint.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't believe bass shows up on your decibel meter. It's a vibration. I believe basically noise is other noise, but the bass does not. And it sounds like that's one of the issues, that you have bass going fairly late at night. So how do you regulate bass?
I don't know. The county ordinance for noise is a decibel.
It is.
And then so that, it's an A-weighted, A-weighted recording or measurement, so that's the human ear. So I don't, I don't know about bass, if that's picked up or not, or if that's incorporated with the ordinance.
Yeah, my understanding is it's not. So that becomes an issue.
And question, right, the permit that they have to be an event center does not exempt them from the standard noise ordinance that applies to everybody?
If they, if they have a CUP or as an event center, I don't, I don't know what the CUP would specify as far as noise.
I could speak to that.
Please.
So there is, in their existing conditional use permit, condition number 32. It is our noise element for the Plaster County It is our noise element for the Placer County general noise. So they are not to exceed the 50 decibels at nearby property receptor lines.
And is that the same as the, that's the county-wide?
That is a county-wide.
So that's, that's what we're all, any of us who has a party, we're restricted to that same?
Correct. But we did include it in the conditions to make that point clear that noise is restricted to our county standard.
Okay. One more and then I'll, the, the condition that, that says that, that they're to be done by 10, is that the event itself done at 10? Or is that the place vacated and empty and gone by 10?
We consider the hours of operation to end at 10:00 PM. So there may be, need to be internal discussion on if operations include that of cleanup or, um, you know, like she mentioned, catering staff clearing out. From my understanding, it's the events can go till 10:00 PM. I don't know that, maybe we've been silent on whether or not operations to cleanup need to, you know?
I was gonna say, I would, I would personally interpret that as the band's done and, and the, the announcement's kind of made, we're done, it's time to go home.
Yes.
But that there would be some cleanup and other things happening after that.
Yeah, and I, I think that's an assumption that we've kind of maybe all made, but I don't know that it's explicit in our conditions that, um, you know, operations outside of the event, including cleanup, need to end right at 10. So that may be something we can address.
I think we also heard, um, I don't have a question for you. I, I think we also heard that.
You mentioned that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be over here if you guys need me.
Appreciate that, thanks.
You know, the number of events is going from 60 to 59. But I also heard that there are additional events happening even, even outside of the agreed upon time now and more than 60 perhaps. I heard the indication of that. What, what is, what does the CUP say about, you know, personal events happening and, and, and other events happening on this property?
Yeah, I don't know that the CUP addresses what we would call like a private event. I think our understanding is that, um, you know, someone who's coming to pay to use a facility that, you know, would trigger one of those events. Now, if we need to include private events where family, friends that are not paying to use the facilities, it's not specifically clear in our conditions that those events are included in that 59 per year.
Yeah, cause right now, this, the, the current CUP doesn't allow any events outside of personal or other, right? In the designated, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll, I can speak to that. I mean, the, the events are for the, the wedding facility. So those are actual events. Private events are completely separate, not considered as part of this use permit. Just like any other property would, would have the property right to do their private event. So this CUP only speaks to, uh, you know, those events that are, you know, they're actually getting, you know, paid to have these events.
Okay, thank you. That, that brings the clarity that I need, thank you.
Okay.
One more question over here.
My turn finally. As someone who's actually performed those, not in Placer County and another jurisdiction, those kind of noise abatement calls in uniform in my past, I can speak to deputies in law enforcement are trained to know without a decimeter and noise detection device on what constitutes loud, loud and obnoxious annoying sound. So I would just like to request of the chair, and the chair can make the request of the county staff, that there be a communication between the planning department and the sheriff's office, to the extent possible that the deci, that the decibel meter, there are two units as it's, has been conveyed here. And we don't know what happened on that particular night. Deputy was dispatched. There may have been other situations that were higher priority calls going on. So the unit that went to that actual call may not have had a decimeter or decibel technology, detecting noise technology. So just to the extent possible, if that makes sense, planning department and the sheriff's office talk about that, at least to make that, make that request so that the, uh, the sheriff's team, the deputy's team are aware that in their station, they have two of those devices and that they can be deployed as necessary. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would agree that, yes.
From the staff, uh, the construction of the road. Looking at the existing permit, they were required to do a grading plan, drainage plan. Was that done and is it in compliance with county standards for drainage?
Um, yes, and I may have Eric speak to this as well. They did submit and got approved improvement plans for that paved parking. So all that was reviewed and, and approved. And there's a notice of complete letter, um, from 2010 when the, um, previous property owners actually did the improvements. County was involved in that process in permitting that and approving that.
Did we close the public hearing yet, or are we just?
We're just discussing. We are just discussing at this.
So will we close the public hearing?
I guess I did not officially, but.
Okay, well, that's all right, you know? I'll, I'll discuss. Let me see, I don't know if I really picked up real clearly on that. What I heard is, uh, maybe they need a turn lane in the center of the road. But basically, uh, what is the access like? The engineering access and does it beat the county code as far as entry and exit from the property?
Yeah, those addressed within the improvement plans and their encroachment complies with what we require.
Is it fully in compliance? And so people have a good opportunity at least to do it right?
Yeah. The tapers and radiuses and everything line up with what we want.
Delaney, if I recall correctly, I've, I've been to a wedding there. And if, on the barn, cause there's been some comments that maybe the doors are open and the noise is coming out. On the, the larger doors, don't they face Taylor Road and face towards the house, if I remember correctly?
Uh, yes, that is correct. So I did perform a site visit and, and, you know, witnessed this myself. The large barn door is facing Taylor Road. And there are French doors and I believe they're facing to the east towards the cemetery that is next to property adjacent to them.
So as far as the barn, there is no doors in the back that would face towards the house open up?
Not that I was aware of.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
If we have, uh, addressed everybody's questions and comments?
Yeah.
Is there anybody who has not spoken already that would like to speak? Well, I think. I, I, I think we don't want to really kind of start having everybody come up again and again, or we'll, we'll, we'll never get out of here. If, if there's somebody who hasn't spoken that would like to address, we'd, we'd like to hear from you. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and close the, the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for recommendations. It, that, that, it's, I guess, quite possible that not everything was, was directly addressed one at a time. It could have been addressed within the report or elsewhere. Or I guess it's possible it didn't pique the interest of the commissioners to pursue it further. Your comments, emotions?
Yeah. I'm thinking that, uh, you know, we did hear some real valid concerns from folks and I can appreciate that. I think probably the, uh, major issues are related to the noise. And it sounds like maybe for this particular unit, the county may need to pay a little bit more attention to the places that are coming out or the people in the neighborhood need to complain to the county when they notice that there's a problem. And you heard today who in the county actually is in charge of this. So you've got cards you can pass out to them. And it sounds like there needs to be a little bit more coordination with the sheriff's office to make sure that, even if the sheriff can't really deal or doesn't have time to deal with the issue, that somehow they get a report back to you that there was an issue. Be something important. The other issue seemed to deal with the road, the people coming in and out of it. Well, I don't know if people should be parked along that road. Probably not, cause they got a parking lot that's supposed to handle the public. I did hear that the entry to the parcel is, meets the county standard. And so people have a place to slow down and a place to speed up and enter the traffic safely. And, uh, that's what you have to expect of drivers. You know, you can't control people that don't know how to drive very well. But at least as far as the design of the property goes, it does meet the county standard. So on that basis, I would, uh, recommend, I would recommend that the commission approve the request of conditional use permit modification, APL N 180047, subject to the revised conditions of approval and findings in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
If the chair could just also include in the motion the exemption under SEQA. Well, I believe that was probably left off with that recommendation.
Those have to be done separately, right?
You can do it all at once on this one.
Did we miss something in the, in that? I can do it.
The recommendation that's up there just doesn't include the reference to the SEQA exemption. So I would just ask that, uh, if, if there is going to be a motion made to approve the conditional use permit modification, that it also accompany a finding that, uh, that modification is exempt under SEQA.
Okay, yeah, that's, I'll include that.
Yeah.
Motion's been modified, we still have a second?
You still do.
All right, roll call, please, Sue.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Johnson, a second by Commissioner Nader. So your vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Herschel.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, can I ask you a favor? Brian, could you be by the door and hand your cards out to these people, please? So they know who to contact? Thank you.
All right, all right, 10, 15.
They can't appeal it.
Oh, that is true. This item is appealable. If somebody's not happy with the decision made by the commission by paying a fee of $602, you can appeal this to the board of supervisors?
We have 10 days to do so.
More than 10, 10, 10 days?
All right, good morning Commissioners, Chairman. My name is Callie Kedinger Cecil with the Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is an appeal of the zoning administrator's denial of an existing unpermitted gazebo to remain within the property line setbacks and the setback from a pond where setbacks of 30 feet and 50 feet are normally required. The property is located near the intersection of Auburn Folsom Road and King Road in the Loomis area and is shown here in purple. The site is zoned residential agriculture with a combining minimum building site of two, of 100,000 square feet. The site is currently developed with a primary dwelling that has an attached garage, covered porches, hardscaping, a driveway, and 1,000 square foot residential accessory structure, a pond. And the location of the gazebo that is the subject of the appeal is located here. King Road bisects the southern half of the site. And the southern half of the site contains the onsite sewage disposal area as well as a horse paddock. The owner of this property also owns the adjacent property to the east, which is developed with a shop in a barn, a vineyard, driveway, hardscaping and landscaping. And both sites contain perimeter fencing. Oh, I also wanted to mention that in 2015, a code enforcement complaint was received for structures located within the setbacks. And to that end, the applicant submitted a variance in order to seek compliance for those structures. So the first structure is a six-foot tall solid fence with a one-foot tall open wire topping. So it's seven feet. And it was approved to allow, um, to allow it to remain at seven feet where a height of six feet is normally required. The second item is a lattice fence and this is eight feet and it's within a setback. And it was approved to remain at eight feet where six feet is normally required. The final item in the variance request is the gazebo. It is currently two feet from the rear property line. It's 16 feet from this property line and 18 feet from the high water mark of the pond. The setback from the pond is 50 feet. The property line setbacks are 30 feet. The zoning administrator denied this request. So I've got a couple photos of the gazebo. It has a shingle roof. It's a pitched roof. It's open sided. There's an electrical connection. It does have curtains during inclement weather. In this picture, you can see where the neighbor's house is in relation to the gazebo. You can't see the fence too well, but the fence that is six-foot solid with the one-foot open wire top is right here. Can't really see it here either, but it is pretty close to that gazebo. And then this is the lattice that was approved to remain. So at the hearing, as I mentioned, the height increases for the fence and the lattice were approved. The zoning administrator found special circumstances to warrant consideration of those features, including the need for privacy and protection from deer for the vineyard. And he also found that the request for one and two additional feet for the fence was a minimum departure for the standard. The zoning administrator denied the setback variance request for the gazebo. He found that no special circumstances exist to warrant consideration of the variance. Because though not ideal, there are other locations on the property where it could be located, including other locations that are still within setbacks, but not quite as intrusive as a two-foot setback. Lastly, the zoning administrator found that though, that because the gazebo is two feet from the property line, that it could in fact be detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of the adjacent properties. Lastly, he also found that the request for two feet where a 30-foot standard is required is not a minimum departure. So after the hearing, the applicant submitted an appeal of this decision and submitted a letter. That letter is attached to the staff report and is summarized here. He states that the gazebo was built with the neighbor's permission in 2014, that the construction for the, uh, the construction materials for the gazebo were actually brought through the neighbor's property with permission. The cost to remove the gazebo is expensive at $20,000, that it cannot be relocated elsewhere near the pond, and that the fencing provides privacy and sound attenuation for the neighbor and his welding business, and that the fencing provides deer, uh, protection from deer and serves as a pond safety barrier. So as noted in the staff report, uh, though the neighbor may have given permission to bring materials through or given permission to have it placed there, the applicant did not obtain a building permit for the gazebo. Had a building permit, permit been obtained, he would have been informed of the development standards, including the setbacks. The zoning administrator found that the permission from the neighbor and the cost of relocating the structure are not special circumstances that should warrant consideration of granting the variance. The zoning administrator noted that while not ideal and not near the pond, there are other locations, including the area to the south across King Road that I pointed out earlier, as well as the adjacent property also owned by the applicant. So ultimately, the, uh, the fences was approved, but the gazebo was denied for those reasons. So staff is recommending that the commission deny the appeal by the applicant and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to deny the variance, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, this, I have a question. This may be kind of a no-brainer, but, uh, at any rate, so the gazebo of this size would normally require a building permit?
Yes.
And you said that this did not happen in this case?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Run away yet?
Okay.
How big is the current gazebo?
It exceeds the 120 square foot standard. I don't remember off the top of my head the property owner is here. Do you recall the size of the gazebo? Well, it's, it, it exceeds 120 square feet. Well, it's, it exceeds 120 square feet.
So if it was below the 120-square-foot threshold, would we be having this discussion at all? Do setbacks still apply to a shed or anything else that's below 120 square feet?
So the zoning ordinance defines a structure as anything over 120 square feet exceeding six feet in height and permanently affixed to the ground. In order for the applicant to modify this to a point where it's not a structure, you'd have to remove the roof, these posts, you'd have to remove the electrical connection. And I'm not exactly sure how it's affixed. I don't know if it's built right on top, but that, how it's affixed to the ground would have to be addressed, too. So it would have to not be a structure as defined in the ordinance in order to not require a building permit and adhere to setback requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Would the applicant like to, or the appellant like to get up and?
Yeah, my name is Joe Bullock, and I live at 9345 King Road. This is a project that goes back to 2014, probably late 2013, 2014. The building permit issue is, back then when I bought this property six years ago, there was an open wire fence along that property line. That property line's about 75, 80 feet in width. Visually open, you could see from the neighbor's property all the way into our backyard and all the way up into our main home. So one weekend, we went to the Sacramento, my wife and I went to the Sacramento Home and Garden Show in Sacramento, and there were some guys from Great Britain, and they were selling gazebos of various sizes and they're hand-built and custom-fit and so forth. And so we liked the idea of putting a gazebo back there in the pond, and I have a lot of exotic waterfowl and everything from various parts of the, of the world that are in that pond as well. And so it'd be a nice area to sit there and have a glass of wine or something and view the pond and the scenery, and it's a beautiful setting. And so we talked to these guys and, and it was, we asked them if they could build one of these in, in, in our property. And they said absolutely. And I said, well, I said, is there any permits or anything necessary for a build a structure like this? And they said, well, if there is, we'll take care of it, you know? And I said, fine. I said, let's go ahead and build one. So I went to the neighbor next door and I asked him for permission to bring in the materials from his driveway and his, his side. And I also asked him for permission, does that obstruct any views or anything? And he said, no. He said, there's no problem at all. So we built the structure, built it knowingly, that I knowingly thought that the contractor building it had gone to the city, to the county, to request permits or anything. I didn't even know that a permit was necessary for this structure until this complaint was filed. And I do want to say one thing. I want to say that the staff, the planning commission, the staff, the, the building department, Ryan, Kaylee, Ben, they've all been fantastic people to work with. And, and I have no complaints whatsoever. We've been trying to resolve this whole thing. There's been a lot of accusations against me filed in this thing, which are totally untrue, false, and I guess by today's standards, it's called fake news. I don't, I don't know. But so that's the reason, in that particular area where it's built, you cannot access that property unless you go over a bridge, goes over a little creek, and that accesses that piece, accesses that piece of property over there. When I originally bought the property, it was a putting green, concrete slabs and so forth, and used as a putting green over there. So what we did is we took an existing concrete slab that was there, and we modified it somewhat to set the gazebo on it. So the gazebo has been there since late 2013, early, mid-2014, without any complaints. It is not in disrepair, as you can see. It doesn't create a fire hazard, which is, you know, part of the complaint. It is missing a few shingles because of the high winds and the weather we've had in the last month or so. But other than that, it's a, you know, a beautiful piece of, of work that's done. The fencing issues, in the picture there, you can see to the left-hand side of the gate, the gazebo, that's the other neighbor. She put in an eight-foot-tall deer-proof fence all the way around her property. I mean, there's probably about 300 feet of it that coincides with the Dowden property as well. But there's been no complaint filed about that. There's been no issues on that, and I really don't care. It doesn't bother me a bit. My property, I have, on my parcel next door, I have over 2,000 vines, vineyard, and I needed to protect that vineyard from the deer. So at that point, the gazebo was built. Then there was complaints by the neighbor. Our house was broken into and burglarized. So my wife went and bought a big German shepherd. And so the German shepherd ran around the yard and so forth, and it would constantly go to the back wire fence and bark at the Dowdens and the Dowden's dog. And then he was complaining that he was scared that the dog would jump the fence and hurt him and so forth. So about the same time, the vines in the vineyard were growing and deer were starting to come in and eat, eat the vines. Now, each one of these vines is about $40 apiece, and I've got 2,000 of them planted. So every time a group of deer would come in, I'd lose a few vines. So we decided that at that point to build a solid fence on that 70-foot parcel. Now, I own the parcel next door, too, and I think that's a, I'm not sure exactly how long that is. It's maybe 300 feet, maybe, against the Dowden's property as well. And so we built a solid fence, and I built it eight-foot-tall, solid, okay? Pat Dowden called me, I think I was back east someplace. I talked to him. He was very concerned. I told him I needed to put a fence in to protect the vineyards and from the deer from jumping over. He says, well, can we modify it? I said, sure. I said, why don't you come up with an idea? And we can lower it, but I still need to have at least seven foot. So he says, why don't you bring it down to six feet? So I did. I cut it, brought it down to six feet, and then he had a suggestion of putting two or three wires above it to get to the seven feet. I said, that, that works fine. And so that's what I did. So at that point, the fence was used, number one, to keep our dog from, you know, barking and so forth, keep the deer out. And also, the Dowdens runs a welding shop there. There's people coming in all times during the week, different people we don't know. They were constantly looking into our backyard. And we pride in our privacy. We like our privacy. Just also another note, after the gazebo was built and the fence was put up, all of a sudden, two ladders appeared, and you'll see in some of the photographs, and I have photographs of it. A ladder appeared on each side of the gazebo, where he would climb up the ladders and peer into our property periodically all the time. Then there's another picture where it shows some of the fencing on his side that is broken. Well, it's probably broken because he's climbed up the fence to try to look over into our property all the time. So that was the other reasoning for putting in the lattice work on the walkway that goes over the little creek. And you can see it just barely on the right-hand side there. And I contacted a fence contractor and I had him come in. And the left-hand side, you can see, is down low to protect children and so forth from falling into the water. The right-hand side, because I think, I'm not sure the closest proximity of that fence to the back fence, I think is, I'm not sure, 18 feet maybe, away from the property line. But I did that again to screen all of the stuff and the noise that's stored on that property. I mean, there's, there's forklifts, there's tractors, there's dump truck, or dump trailers, there's all kinds of storage in these portable pop-up tents all the time. And it really, I mean, it looks like Sanford and Son's. I mean, I've got photographs of it, if you'd like to see it. So in order to protect the value of our, our property, which is a substantial amount, and I think my property taxes are in excess of $40,000 a year on that piece of property. And we pride ourselves in the way we maintain our stuff. Now, I take full responsibility for the fact that there was no permit taken out. If I'd have known that a permit was necessary, I would not have built that structure. I mean, I wouldn't have done it. I mean, I spent $30,000, $35,000 building it. We say that it was going to cost $20,000 to remove it or to relocate it. It's not going to be that. It's going to probably be, probably $10,000, I would say. So I do have a substantial investment in that, in that structure. Does it affect the Dowden's property? No, it doesn't affect the Dowden's property in any way. He claims it's a fire hazard. Well, let me tell you, this year, I was involved in the, in the Mendo Lake complex fire. My property was the second piece of property to burn in that, burn in that fire. I lost over 4,000 acres in that fire. And I know what it's like to be in a raging wildfire. That fire went on and burnt over 450,000 acres in California. My property was the second property to burn, and I fought that fire with Cal Fire for seven days. So I know what a wildfire can do, and I know what causes it. This being, he compares it to the Paradise Fire. No way. There's, there's just no way that that can happen. But I would like, and I know it doesn't meet any of the setbacks, again, why has this complaint come to you? Basically, a neighbor that's just being vindictive. I mean, being vindictive because I took his view away of coming out his front door, looking into my property. Now I've got a solid fence there, blocks his view, makes his property look smaller. And, and I put chickens, I had a chicken coop that I put in, and he didn't like the chickens. I got rid of the chickens. I took them up to the ranch. So I've done many things to appease him. And so, I mean, this is where we're at today. I apologize to, to the council for taking up your time on this issue. I would ask the council that if it does need to be removed or modified, that we could extend this hearing and let me work with the building department to modify it and change it to meet the appropriate standards to keep it in its current location. I respectfully disagree with the supervisor in the last hearing that says there's other places on the property to relocate it. The Dowdens wanted relocated it on the other side of King Road over by the horse paddocks. Well, a piece of, a structure of this quality doesn't serve any purpose over next to a horse paddock. I mean, so I would respectfully like permission or continuance to work with the building department and work with the staff in order to modify it, change it, or relocate it so it doesn't become a problem. I do have one other issue, and I'm not a type of person that's going to complain or file complaints on a property owner. I mean, I believe that a property, a guy that owns his property, you know, he can do what he wants with it. I mean, that doesn't bother me. I've never filed a complaint with the Dowdens, but he's made numerous accusations against me that are false, false statements, false statements in his, his reports that he submitted to, to all of you. And I, it's just, it's not right. But I do have photographs, and further down the property line, he does have a metal structure, and there's a repairian right-of-way that, on this property, that's a 50-foot-wide repairian right-of-way. He has built a metal structure within two to three feet of my property line on his side. He's brought in two to three to four feet of fill and filled in the repairian right-of-way. He's built block walls. He's parking all kinds of equipment.
Mr. Bullock, I, I understand what you're saying, but realistically, that's not items that are before us right now?
Yeah, I, I realize, I, I do realize that, and I, I just want to let you know that I am going to file a formal written complaint on the buildings that he has, you know, located next to my property line, and the various equipment, and encroaching onto the repairian right-of-way. So I've got a structure that is two feet of his property line. He has multiple structures that are two feet of my property line as well. I've never filed a complaint on this. So I do ask that, if we can continue this, I'd like to work with the building department in order to make changes and modifications to it, to meet code or to meet the standards or to get approval from the staff.
Thank you. And any questions, Mr. Bullock, from the commission? Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Any members of the public who would like to address the commission? Again, we'll keep comments to, to three minutes. When you see the yellow light come on, that's your, your one-minute warning to kind of finish your thoughts, if you would, please.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Dowden, and I live at 3455 Auburn Folsom Road, which is the residence that you can see in the right-hand corner of that photograph. My husband and I, we built our home 20 years ago. We worked very hard to create an environment that is beautiful and peaceful and enjoyable, a place that we're proud to have friends and family come over and enjoy their time there. We don't live like the Beverly Hillbillies. We have had garden club tours at our home. We have had companies come and do photo shoots at our home for print media. We take a lot of pride in what we have created with our own hands on our property. And the gazebo is the first thing I see when I walk out of my house every morning. It sits two feet from my property line, and it's started to deteriorate. It's become an eyesore. The shingles are falling off. They're falling onto my property. The fence that Mr. Bullock built, he, there was the existing fence that was there before, and when he built the wooden fence, he built it right next to the existing fence. And if you'll refer to the photograph marked number zero, you can see clearly in there that the old, original fence was not removed. I've not felt that I have the right to remove that fence since it's fully on his property. It's on his side of the property line. And it, debris, leaf litter, garbage has gathered between the two fences and really is creating an unsightly situation and causing deterioration of the old fence. It's beginning to fall apart and rot because of all of the moisture that's trapped in there from the leaf litter. When we built our home, we built it within the property envelope, on the envelope that we could build in. I can't move my home, but Mr. Bullock can clearly move his gazebo. It would cost me a lot more than $10,000 to move my home. And I oppose the issuance of this variance because it does infringe upon my rights as a property owner, and it does affect the quality of my life. It is a problem for me. It is unsightly, and I don't like it being right there on that property line. Thank you. And any remaining time I give to my husband. Do you have any questions for me?
Excel, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pat Dowden. I also oppose the issuance of variance. I would like to make one correction in my letter that I gave to Ms. Cecil. I didn't get her latest recommendation. So my objection on her letter, which, which was the first one that was written to Mr. Rosasco, so I withdraw that, and I support her current recommendation on denial of the variance. Am I clear on that one? Please. Okay. I live at 3455 Auburn Folsom Road. I'm, I'm opposing the granting of the variance and support Ms. Cecil's report for the following reasons. Visual blight is described by my wife, depreciation in my property values, safety and fire. Mr. Bullock, if you look at the pictures closely, took it upon himself to build this very elaborate gazebo right on the property line, underneath two oak trees that are on my side of the property. So those oak trees, my house is only 30 feet from Mr., the fence line. So the, the wooden structure that he's built is up underneath the tree canopy. The tree canopy extends approximately a third of the way across my driveway towards my house. I'd like to show you some of the- I'd like to show you some of the debris that's been accumulated. This is a wooden shingle that's on my, that I located on my property. This is a wooden shingle that came from Mr. Bullock's, one of many that have ended up in my driveway, which is less than 30 feet from his gazebo. Shingle roofs in this county, correct me if I'm wrong, are illegal, wooden shingles. And there's a reason for that, because this thing is paperweight, it catches fire, floats up and lands on my roof, then I have a major problem. In Exhibit C is debris that's shedding off of his fence, his original fence. You'll see it in the photographs. I believe it's in 4A and B on the photographs that I submitted. All of that debris is now coming off the, that fence has never been touched in five years since I filed a complaint. So on the issue of the fire, if you build a wooden structure, which is illegal in itself, that goes up into the tree canopy, you risk having what's called a crown fire, which is what happened in Paradise. All that debris comes on my house. The trees then explode, and I take pride in keeping my property very clean of any debris. I spent 20 years limbing up all of the trees on my property, and now he comes in and builds this structure.
We're out of time here now.
Well, I would ask for more, sir. Mr. Bullock went on for about 20 minutes, and this has been a five-year process. My wife also donated her time to me. I, to try and expedite this, I gave-
Try to wrap it up here in another minute or so. We don't keep track of how much time your wife had left to know how much time to add to you. It doesn't get done that way. So see if you can't wrap up your thoughts here quickly, please.
All right. If you look at Item A that I submitted to you, Mr. Bullock, by the number of complaints that he has here, is a serial violator. He has not applied for any permits since he's moved there. And you saw B and C. In Item D are alternative sites that he can locate, relocate that, and there are hundreds of them, that he can relocate his gazebo to, and they're highlighted in orange. Item E in the packet, if you could end to the bottom of the page. This was a meeting February 5th by the local fire departments, Rockland, South Placer, and Cal Fire. How can I work with my neighbors to reduce fire fuel? Well, Mr. Bullock builds wooden structures under oak trees, which would spread to my house. Item F, Mr. Bullock claims that he had a conversation with me regarding fence construction. False. I set up a meeting with him, if you'll look at F, where he was going to come over on Saturday, the 15th of July of 2015, to discuss the issues, including his gazebo. He failed to appear after setting up a meeting with me. He never called again. The rest of the photographs, Photograph 2 shows a half an acre of space across King Road where he could easily locate the gazebo. Item 3 in that packet.
Mr. Dowden, we have copy of the packet here, and I've had a chance to go over it ourselves.
All right, then let me go through, Mr., this clearly is an issue of credibility.
We're kind of out of time here. We've given you-
So you're shutting me off, is what you're saying?
I think we're probably done here.
Okay. Well, in any event, we strongly recommend that acceptance of Ms. Cecil's report and denial of the variance on the gazebo.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the commission? You know, I think we probably have enough information here. Bullock, we'll bring it back, we'll close the public comment portion of this and bring it back. Is there comments from commissioners?
I have a question. If this is denied, how long does the property owner have to remove the property? Or remove the gazebo?
So in that event, we didn't have a condition for that, but it would be referred back to code enforcement to have that removed. But we could certainly add a condition that has a timeframe.
Yeah, I was just, because he asked to delay this decision, but the decision is about the location of this two feet to the property line. So I don't see a reason to delay the decision, but want to make sure if he wants to work with code enforcement, building department, to relocate the structure properly, just to make sure that we're not saying it has to be torn down quickly.
I'm sorry, that it has to be what, quickly, brought down quickly?
I don't, no, I don't. I would like to see that he has adequate time to work with the building department, work with code enforcement, to relocate the structure.
Okay.
I don't want to be in a position to say this has to be down in a short period of time. I'd like to, but, again, it needs to be taken down in a timely manner.
I mean, certainly the commission has a discretion to continue this out 30 or 60 days. There is still an appeal at hand. So within that timeframe, you know, it could be continued, and then we can, you know, bring it back to see what progress was made and, you know, a final determination made at that time if you are not, like, you're not making a decision today.
My comment would be, and I want to make sure I'm stating this correctly, if the commission required Mr. Bullock to remove the gazebo, he could then basically build something at 120 square feet, just like it, in the exact same spot, and we've really not accomplished much.
It wouldn't be able to exceed six feet. It wouldn't, I mean, it would have to be a temporary foundation or something that's not permanently affixed to the ground. And he would also have to remove the electrical connection. So it's not simply a matter of the size of the structure, it's the height as well and how it's affixed. So there's a number of modifications that would need to be made in order for it to not be considered a structure as defined under the ordinance.
Wouldn't be practical. I'd like to say, if you don't mind, that I have no interest personally in us continuing this item. I think we have enough information to make a decision. We've been given a whole lot of other things that don't even relate to what our decision is about. So I think we need to focus specifically on what we're being asked to do. And that is to either deny or to agree with, deny the appeal. Or, you know, so I think we have two very clear choices here of what we can do. And I would go ahead, and unless there's further discussion, I would go ahead and say that, make a motion that we deny the appeal by the applicant.
I'll second that.
Pardon?
I'm seconding that.
You're seconding.
You have a motion and a second? Discussion, are we ready for roll call?
Are you combining the two statements up there or doing them separate?
Counsel, do we need to put those together or those separate issues? Since they have bullet points separately.
You can put them together for purposes.
Okay, well, and I will add the second part of that, which is upholding the zoning administrator's decision to deny the variance supported by the Financing Department and the staff report.
My second stands, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Okay, I have a first from Commissioner Nader and a second from Commissioner Herschel, combining both into one motion. So I'll have a vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Herschel?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I believe, Mr. Bullock, this is appealable within 10 days to the Board of Supervisors and pay a fee of $602 and file that appeal. Thank you. Might be time to take a 10-minute break.
Good idea.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and say that I think we need to focus specifically on what we're being asked to do. And that is to either deny or to agree with, deny the appeal. Or, you know, so I think we have two very clear choices here of what we can do. And I would go ahead, and unless there's further discussion, I would go ahead and say that, make a motion that we deny the appeal by the applicant.
I'll second that.
Pardon?
I'm seconding that.
You're seconding.
You have a motion and a second? Discussion, are we ready for roll call?
Are you combining the two statements up there or doing them separate?
Counsel, do we need to put those together or those separate issues? Since they have bullet points separately.
You can put them together for purposes.
Okay, well, and I will add the second part of that, which is upholding the zoning administrator's decision to deny the variance supported by the Financing Department and the staff report.
My second stands, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Okay, I have a first from Commissioner Nader and a second from Commissioner Herschel, combining both into one motion. So I'll have a vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Herschel?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I believe, Mr. Bullock, this is appealable within 10 days to the Board of Supervisors and pay a fee of $602 and file that appeal. Thank you. Might be time to take a 10-minute break?
Good idea.
All right, I think we're ready to start with our 10:40 item. The Durevanchuk variance, if I said that correctly?
Oh, Durevanchuk?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Good morning. Again, my name is Callie Kendra Cecil, Planning Services Division. The item before you is an appeal of the zoning administrator's denial of a proposed variance to allow an existing poolhouse and sauna to remain within the property line setbacks. It's eight feet from property lines where setbacks of 20 and 50 feet are normally required, and to allow for 3,600 square feet of residential accessory use, where 2,400 square feet is normally allowed. The project site is located in the island area of Granite Bay, shown here in the little purple spot. The city of Roseville, it surrounds this area to the northeast and south. Sierra College Boulevard is over here to the east, and East Roseville Parkway is here. The Placer-Sat County line is about a half mile to the south. The project site, it is 1.3 acres and is owned residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining minimum building site of 40,000 square feet. It is developed with a primary dwelling that has an attached garage and covered porches, a guest house that also has an attached garage and covered porches, an 816-square-foot unpermitted poolhouse and sauna, and a 240-square-foot unpermitted shed. The site is pretty flat, but it does slope a little bit downhill towards Annabelle Avenue. There's a 50-foot road easement that goes here, and therefore, this property line is considered a front, and that property line has a 50-foot front setback. So, the applicant submitted a variance to request to allow the existing poolhouse to remain eight feet from the south front property line where 50 feet is normally required, and eight feet from the west side property line where 20 feet is required, to allow an existing 240-square-foot shed to remain 11 feet from the east side property line where 20 feet is normally required, and to increase the maximum allowable square footage for residential accessory structures, to allow for 3,600 square feet total, where 2,400 square feet is normally required. This is the site plan that was submitted with the variance. This is the poolhouse and sauna. It's the driveway extending from Annabelle Avenue. This is the primary dwelling that has a garage. There's also some attached porches. This is the primary dwelling that has an attached garage and porches, and then the 240-square-foot shed. In 2018, a code enforcement complaint was received regarding the number of dwellings on the property, infrastructures built without permits. Code compliance staff verified the validity of the complaint and informed the property owner potential remedies for the issue, which included obtaining a variance. So, at the December 28th, that says 117, it was actually the December 28th, 21st, sorry, 2018 zoning administrator hearing. And the zoning administrator approved the location of the shed and allowed it to remain 11 feet from the property line with the condition that the applicant obtain a building permit. But he found no special circumstances to warrant consideration of the variance to allow the poolhouse and sauna to remain within setbacks and to allow for the increase in residential accessory square footage. On December 28th, the applicant submitted a letter of appeal. He was appealing the zoning administrator's denial of the setback request for the poolhouse and sauna and to allow increased accessory square footage. The applicant, or the appellant submitted a letter that contends multiple issues with the variance complaint that is attached to the staff report. But to summarize, his argument is that the structures were built by a previous property owner. He was aware that, not aware that they were unpermitted. The cost to remove the structures would be nearly $37,000. The structures cannot be relocated outside of the setbacks. And he also contends that removing the structures would reduce property values on his property as well as adjacent properties. The appellant also submitted a map that shows the location of a two-inch water line through the property. That's also included with the staff report. And that demonstrates that the variance for the setback should be allowed because he can't go over that water line. So, in response to that, the zoning administrator found that simply because you didn't know that the structures were unpermitted is not a special circumstance that should warrant consideration of the variance. When someone buys property, there's a due diligence period, and it's up to them to verify whether or not structures are permitted. The zoning administrator also found that the cost to remove the structures is not a special circumstance. And he could find no special circumstances on the property based on size, shape, topography that would warrant consideration of the variance for the setback request as well as the increase in residential accessory square footage. The parcel is larger than the minimum required parcel size. It has, it's relatively flat, except for the area to the north, and it is uniformly shaped in that it has four parallel lines and is a straight rectangle. Finally, property values are impacted by a number of different factors, and impacts to property values are not considered a special circumstance under the zoning ordinance. These, oh, I also have some photos of the structures. We have the guest house here. It's 1,762 square feet. This structure was initially the primary dwelling on the site. When it was converted to a guest house, there was a condition to remove the kitchen because it exceeds the allowable square footage for a secondary dwelling. So, it's that kitchen that makes it a secondary dwelling or a guest house, and that was supposed to be removed. This is the shed that was allowed to remain. It's 11 feet from the east property line. And finally, this is the poolhouse and sauna. This is the interior. This shows an area that could potentially be a kitchen, but it's, looks like it just has a sink and microwave and a small fridge. It is eight feet from this property line. This is the south property line where there's a 50-foot setback, and it's eight feet from the east property line. Staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeal by the applicant and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to deny the variance supported by the findings contained in the staff report. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Callie? I have one quick question.
Okay.
Just one of those things that sticks in my head. When no pool exists on the property, isn't there something else we could call that besides a poolhouse?
Well, there's actually a hot tub right here. And the zoning ordinance discusses that a poolhouse could be for a hot tub. So, but the appellant's letter does state that in the future, he would like to construct a pool. One thing I would like to point out, and this is noted in the staff report, the square footage of a pool counts towards your overall accessory square footage, which he is already exceeding, so he wouldn't be able to build a pool.
And then, another question. Seems to me a while back, we did a, maybe it was a zoning text amendment or something, where I think that's where the wording was created, where that one road easement determines that, if you go back to the map, to where that one property line is considered a front yard and subject to front yard setbacks, even though it's not really the front yard?
I believe you're referring to the proposed zoning text amendment regarding front setbacks?
Correct.
So, that one would be considered a side street setback and wouldn't have a 50-foot setback?
Correct.
It's my understanding that that's a proposed zoning text amendment that has not yet been approved?
Yeah, if that were to go through, would there still be an issue with the setbacks?
This would be a side setback, and the side setback is 20 feet, and it's eight feet from the property line. So, even if it's not a front setback?
It's, there's still an issue?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the appellant like to get up and address the commission?
Hi, my name is Maria Durevanchuk. This is my father, Victor Durevanchuk. I'm here to translate for him. So, one, I would like to make a correction. It showed the letter that we had written and submitted. In the end, it said that we said it would reduce property values. What actually we said is, if we had permission to include the poolhouse in our property, then it would actually increase, we would suggest that it would increase property values and taxes for our area. So, again, the structures were built prior to him owning the property. The structures were built as they said about four or over years ago. He's only owned the property since December of 2017. And we did not know at the time that they were not permitted. We didn't know actually until we received the letter about this issue. And the complaint was actually made about the shed that was on the other side of the property. So, neither one of the residents that lived to the side of the poolhouse have any complaints about where it is or it being there. He's actually in really good standing with our neighbors, and they have told us that they are willing to provide letters of their support for where it is. So, also, she brought up the guest house in that we were supposed to remove the kitchen. We were told at the time of that being done that all that entailed is we can't have a stove, which there are no electric, there is no gas appliances in the property. There is just the fridge that was in the picture, which we let Callie know when we were going through the process that we had no issue with removing, if that is a stipulation that they would like to include. Aside from that, that area is simply used for storage because the cabinets are already exist there. That aside, we've already had the guest house permitted and the walkthroughs and everything done at the time of, and it was exactly the same as it is now. So, I'm not really sure why it's a problem now when it wasn't when they initially did the walkthroughs and the inspections. Okay, I think that's all he has to say.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any?
Just out of curiosity, I did do a title search on the property because obviously, part of what you're saying is that he took title of the property within the last couple of years when all this, all this construction was done. And I found that the property sold in May 10th of 2012, and then, within a few months, it was quick claimed, I believe, to you. And then, he took title of it within the last couple of years through a quick claim as well. So, it would seem like, if that's, if that's the case, that you two would have been communicating about what was going on on the property, so.
Not to the extent of him knowing that those structures were not permitted.
Okay. All right.
Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any members of the public who would like to address the commission on this? Seeing none, I guess we will close the public comment portion of it. Back to the commission?
I guess I do have a question. I'm a little bit confused because we've been looking at a, I guess, zoning text amendment that would allow more than just a guest house?
Secondary.
Secondary residence on the property? Is that, I guess, that's something that hasn't been approved yet, or will react with that process?
I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding the question. Can you repeat?
Well, we've been talking about a zoning ordinance change where you could have a secondary residence on the property?
Yeah, he can have a secondary residence on the property, but the square foot limitation is 1,200 square feet. The guest house is 1,762 square feet, so it's 562, 562 square feet beyond what you could have for a secondary dwelling.
So, is, so it's still a guest house, and they'd have to remove the kitchen?
The fridge should be removed, yeah. It can't have a kitchen because it can't be a secondary dwelling. The definition of a guest house is there's no, no full kitchen.
Okay.
And is it correct that what defines a kitchen is whether or not it has a stove?
It's, the ordinance states that you can't have a refrigerator exceeding five cubic square feet. So, that's, you know, like a mini fridge. You could have a mini fridge. You can't have a full fridge. You can have a microwave, but you can't have a stove, and you can't have cooking appliances. So, for the guest house, they would have to remove that large fridge. There was also a condition in the original variance that they would have to cap off any connections for a refrigerator or a stove. And the condition also had a requirement for staff to verify that that had been done.
And so, then, the other issue, I guess, it seems to me, there's, there's two issues. One is the setback issue. The other is the total coverage on the lot. That's probably the harder one to...
Right, and it's, it's not necessarily the coverage. The coverage for this parcel, you're allowed to have 35% coverage. Right now, there's 11% coverage. What's the issue is the amount of residential accessory square footage. On parcels, 1.2 to 2.29 acres, you're allowed 2,400 square feet. So, the parcel is 1.3 acres, so they can only have 2,400 square feet of residential accessory use. So, that includes the guest house, the shed, and the poolhouse and the sauna.
Thoughts from the commissioners?
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we deny the appeal by the applicant, uphold the zoning administrator's decision, deny the variance supported by the findings stated in the staff report.
I'll second that.
I have a first by Mr. Nader and a second by Mr. Hersog. So, a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
I must say no.
Thank you.
Not that it matters at this point.
They can appeal it?
This adder is appealable to the board of supervisors by paying a fee of $602 within 10 days. You can have them look at it if you'd like. Okay, our next item is the nuisance abatement for Diego Ventures Inc. Do we have, wait.
Chairman, real quick, we did get a phone call earlier that this gentleman had some car trouble and may be an hour late. The course out some time ago. So, if the, if the commission wants to go to the next item, I think, from a timing standpoint, that's possible, too.
I think in the interest of giving him a chance to be heard, that that would be appropriate, that we could, in fact, we're right on time now for the 11:45 item. And so, unless there's any objections, we'll just move on to that and give the other gentleman a chance to get here. So, this is a public hearing?
Yes. I'd like to just provide some of the ground rules for nuisance abatement actions before we get started, because it has been a little while since we've, we've had one. There's two nuisance abatement matters on. After each item is called, the clerk will be in charge of placing all individuals who wish to testify under oath. Then, we'll proceed with the code compliance officer presenting the case. Any member of the public, in particular, the property owner or the affected person, has a right to present their case. They also, and this is somewhat different, they also have the right to cross-examine any of the witnesses appearing on behalf of the county or in the audience. And you, like any other hearing, you are allowed to establish time limits for the comments for the public and for the property owner's testimony. The commissioners then will be charged with listening to the evidence and testimony and making a decision thereafter. You are allowed to ask questions throughout the public hearing if you choose to do so. The rules of evidence that apply in court don't apply here, so hearsay evidence can be presented, and there's no actual objections to evidence. With that being said, since it is an evidentiary hearing, you are required to weigh the evidence and testimony before you reach your conclusion. Then, after witness testimony, the chair will close the public hearing. The commission will deliberate and decide whether to order abatement of the nuisance or to terminate the abatement proceedings. And as to my role, my representation during this proceeding is to the commission, and the county's code compliance division is represented by separate counsel. So, if there's any questions on the format of the process, let me know. Otherwise, I think we're good to go.
Thank you. So, we would ask those wanting to speak on this matter now to, to stand and, and take, take their oath?
That is correct.
Okay. Anybody wanting to speak on this, property owners? County employees, would you please stand? And Sue's gonna have you take an oath before we give you a chance to testify here.
Okay, this is in regards to the nuisance, nuisance abatement Tatiana Corovitz, the vacant lot on Yankee Jims Road in Colfax, California. So, anyone giving testimony today on this matter must do so under oath. If you intend to give testimony on this matter, please stand now and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
You may be seated.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Moss and fellow commissioners. I'm gonna have to forward through this.
Yeah, there may be. There's probably not an easy way to do that, but just flip through them.
Is there a way you could do it on the?
There you go.
Okay.
I think you're getting a little help from. Whoa, there you go.
All right, thank you. Again, I'm Marina Howdige, code compliance officer with Placer County. In February of this year, I took over the case for Officer Estelle Maxwell while she's out on leave. So, this is in regards to a nuisance abatement at a undeveloped parcel on Yankee Jims Road near Canyon Way in Colfax, California. The property is zoned farm and is 4.23 acres in size. This is the vicinity map for Colfax up here, Yankee Jims. This is a aerial view of the property. This is a aerial view of the property. Again, there's no structures on this property. It's just a vacant lot. A complaint was received on May third of two thousand and eighteen in regards to excessive storage on the property. A courtesy notice was mailed to the property owner, Tatiana Korovitz, on May eleventh of two thousand and eighteen. On June seventh, code compliance inspected the property, and it was observed that there was storage of multiple vehicles, including commercial vehicles, trailers, and other equipment on the property. Since the property is undeveloped, no established use with, there's no established use, so storing items as a principal use is not allowed in the farm district. A notice of violation was mailed to the property owner in June. On July twenty-fourth, Officer Estelle Maxwell re-inspected the property and observed that the violations had not been corrected, and she issued a final notice to the property owner at that time. On August twenty-first, Officer Maxwell conducted another inspection and observed that the stored items remained on the property. She issued an administrative citation for a hearing on October seventeenth of two thousand and eighteen, which Mrs. Korovitz was present for, and she gave testimony regarding the violations. The hearing officer did affirm the violations and imposed fines at that time and gave the property owner thirty days to abate the violations. November twenty-eighth, Officer Maxwell inspected the property and observed that there were more vehicles that were brought to the property, including a double-wide mobile home you could see in the picture, and the violations had remained. Due to the lack of cooperation with the property owner, a notice of nuisance was issued in December nineteenth of two thousand and eighteen, and on February twentieth, after compliance was not achieved, a notice of nuisance abatement was issued to the property owner. March twenty-fifth, Monday, I went out to the property and inspected, and again, the vehicles were still on the property, the mobile trailer was still on the property, and items continued to be stored. So at this time, we are asking the planning commission to order the property owner to abate the property within thirty days, and if the owner fails to do so, to empower code compliance to remove the items from the property. So we will go over this background. So again, the violation is because it's an undeveloped parcel, no storage is allowed until they have developed a primary residence, because it's accessory storage. So here is June seventh of two thousand and eighteen. At that time, I believe they were doing some heavy equipment work out there. October fifteenth, this was two days before the administrative hearing, the mobile wide trailer, the double-wide trailer was brought onto the property where it currently sits. They have appears like a camp little area out there as well. There's, on Monday, there's a hammock out there, so I mean, seems like they kind of hang out. This is January of this year. And January eighteenth. And this was on Monday. This is a view from Canyon Way Road and Yankee Gyms. There's an intersection right there. Again, from, right now, it's muddy, there's this creek that kind of flows through, and it appears that the trailer's kind of sinking into that. This is behind the trailer. It seems like there's stuff that moved, that comes and goes, so I don't know how often they're at the property, but I don't know what's under this, but there's fencing back here. This is the camp over here, you can see the hammock. So at this time, planning, we asked the planning commission to take the following actions, to approve the issuance of an abatement order supported by the findings contained in the staff report, to order an abatement pursuant to the conditions contained in the staff report, and authorize the chair of the planning commission to sign an abatement order.
Any question? Don't go away. Any questions, Renee?
Yeah, I do have one question. It appears that there's been extensive amount of excavation, other things going on on the property, not just equipment, storage, which would appear that's also a violation of, because there's no permits have been issued for any work that's been done on this property. Is that correct?
From what I understand, I'm not sure about that, yeah.
Because one of the concerns that was brought up is has also been environmental, about what's going on in this property.
Correct, with the creeks, I guess they have to be so, you know, from what I understand, even the lot itself is going to have issues with even building a property, building a house on it because of the setback issues.
Right.
When we were out there on Monday, it didn't look like there was any, you know, new activity done as far as like, you know, with the groundwork or anything, so I don't know if they've just abandoned it, or if they're just waiting until the weather kind of dries up at this time, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Well, the creek is in the middle of the property?
There is, I don't know if I could go back. When I was out there on Monday, yeah, it's it's like some kind of like little stream that's kind of just flowing through just because of the rain, so I'm not sure if, you know, there's a creek behind. If I could get a better picture. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a creek back in this area, back where this tree line is, so there's like water that just kind of seems to run through right here, so. And it was flowing when I went out there yesterday.
Okay, I guess, has there been a crossing of the actual creek, road crossing?
No. As far as, I mean, right now, this, there's just like a little kind of stream that kind of runs through, so I don't know if anybody's, you know, gone out there, crossed that, but there is driveway, if that's, you know, there's like a culvert that was put in with with a permit. So this was done with a permit right here.
It was done with the permit?
Yes, this right here.
Looks like it really wasn't finished yet.
But the, this area, this right here is further down, right over here. It's closer to the mobile trailer over here, so this is like a different access onto the property.
And that's not the creek, that's just a ditch?
I think there's actually, there's, there's a waterway right here. I don't know if this is.
Well, this is Bunch Creek, right?
I'm not sure.
It runs through the property?
Sure. I don't know about that, yeah. I just know there's, yeah, there's water that flows through here, there's water that was flowing through the property, and then there's water behind on the other side here. So it's surrounded by a lot of water.
I guess I'm just kind of in my mind thinking that as far as Fish and Game is concerned, they may have some issues here, too.
Any winners? Renee, you said there, so there is an encroachment permit off that road for that driveway that was was taken out? How long ago was that?
I don't, I'm not sure about how long ago that was.
But no, no grading permits, no building permits, or anything else applied for?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
And I still have the case from the beginning, so I'm kind of picking up from where she left off, so I apologize for my lack of further information, but.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, maybe one more question. You said this is farm zone?
Yes.
And so in terms of what normally would be permitted in the farm zone, as far as housing, or what would be permitted property?
Residential property with accessory storage would be allowed, so if there was, you know, residential property, they would be able to have storage of vehicles, they would be allowed to actually have one commercial vehicle, as long as the vehicles were registered to them, but with no primary use, it's just a storage lot, so it's not allowed.
Okay, so the farm zone would permit residents on it?
Correct.
Is it limited on the size of the residence, or it could be?
And that would, yeah, that would be up to building. I guess it'd be setback issues, you know, how they could, you know, the site, how big the site is, so that would be all covered with building and planning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. All right, I think we had three other individuals like to come up one at a time. Hold on for one moment. We have time limits available to us here for this, or does this?
Yes, you can impose any time limits.
Okay.
Since there is the the property owner or the affected person has the right to cross-examine witnesses, it would suggest maybe seeing if the property owner or affected person is present.
Oh, good, thank you. Is the property owner present? Appears not, so we'll go ahead and you'll state your name for the record, please.
Thanks, yeah, I'm Mark Root, and I live at, just down the road, seven oh five Yankee Gyms Road. I'm the one who brought the initial complaint, and it was a multiple-fold complaint because the environment was a big part of it for me. The eyesore is obvious, and, but, so, so just quick history. First of all, to ask you a question, Bunch Creek is a creek that runs along the backside of that property. And as you go further down the road, it traverses and comes back to roadside. This drainage ditch that you're calling right here is actually a secondary seasonal creek that then attaches to Bunch Creek, so, and then the water that's going through by the trailers is is kind of overflow. I mean, that's kind of a flood plain, that's the problem with that property for construction, is even those four acres of setbacks from this, which is a seasonal stream, Bunch Creek, which is running year-round right now, and there's not enough room for septic system and and a well. And I tried to talk to the owners about that originally, because when they got involved, I talked to them one time before I filed the complaint, and they basically said, "Get off my property." And so that was kind of how we got started here. The, and to, just a clarification on the encroachment permit, they actually did apply for and receive a driveway permit, but if you can see further down toward that telephone pole, that that's where the driveway permit was was allowed, and they put that in. In doing so, they just covered over that seasonal ditch, and which they really weren't supposed to do, but then they came and did this without a permit several months later. So, and then they got a, they got a, had an engineer come out from the county, I understood, said what they did was okay. I mean, they did it per the specs that it would be done, they just did it in the wrong place. So that, so that was kind of where that encroachment part came in. The other, the other concerns, besides, you know, the eyesore, like I said, is there, they, when they came in, they cleared the property of all vegetation. It used, that used to be all blackberries, so it was wildlife habitat. And also, it wasn't an erosion issue, which it now currently is, as you can see, all that water's running right through the middle of the property, which is what I complained about last year, to try to get this done more quickly, because, and then, because that mud is now going into that Bunch Creek, which feeds the American River, four and a half miles down the road. So I really would like to see you guys get on this. One other thing they're doing is when they, when they're, they're cutting down timber, or they're piling up big piles of brush, and talk about a fire danger, this Yankee Gyms Road is kind of notorious, something burns around here every year. So they're, they're kind of creating these brush piles, and if it's not cleared out before the heat of summer, it's going to be a real issue, so. I think those are my current concerns, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, my name's Renee Charleston, and I live at six twenty-five Yankee Gyms Road, and I walk by or drive by this property numerous times every day, and it is definitely a great example of community blight. I just wanted to to respond to one of the questions that you had brought up in terms of the involvement of fish and wildlife. They did come out, an Officer Perry Schultz I met with, and we talked about the area and some of the issues. There was supposed to be a report made public, and that has never, nobody's ever been able to access that report, so I don't really know where that stands. I think Mark pretty much covered the issues that we all feel real important, and just, I would urge you all to vote for the abatement, because this has been an ongoing problem for almost a year now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joe Cunningham. I'd just like to verify what two previous speakers have said, and that property appears to be all luvial, and it does flood there once in a while. I live quarter mile down the road, and occasionally, in a series of heavy storms, the property floods, you get overflow from the creek. And concerned about human waste when these people are on the property, there appears to be no way of them dealing with it, no porta-potties or anything like that. And, you know, concerned about, is it possible for them to put in septic in that area? Should they be allowed to continue without a study on that? And it's generally just a blight, it's a mess, you know, we have vehicles on there that are mentioned in this report that are licensed from out of state, not current registration, and they're parked next to the creek, they're leaking oil and gas, as all old vehicles do, and they're just settling into the mud next to the creek. That's about it.
Thank you. Are there any questions coming up from commissioners or anything, so I guess at this point?
I guess we're still asking stuff?
If you have questions, then by all means, please.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I'm kind of puzzled over is, it looks like they planned on putting their building house, or at least they have trailers that they can put together and make a house, so maybe that's the plan, which apparently hasn't really been worked out with the building department, I guess. It hasn't, they haven't contacted the building department as far, as far as putting a house on, you know? Okay, and then, obviously, with the mud and stuff from the site, from the clearing that they've done, it's, you know, it's undoubtedly causing a lot of problems with Bunch Creek and like the neighbors down below. As far as this abatement goes, you just, you're going to just deal with the stuff that's on the property, or is there something that's going to be required to mitigate some of the damage they've done in terms of their clearance?
I mean, as far as code compliance would be concerned, we'd just be removing, getting the, having the items removed. As far as, you know, the condition of the property, that would have to be something that either E S D or the building could address.
Yeah, I guess I didn't hear the last part of that, speaking to the microphone.
I guess we could have, you know, E S D, Engineering and Surveying Division, you know, look into it as well when we, you know, if we're going to do an abatement, but for code compliance, you know, our, our concern is just having the items removed. At some point, you know, even if we have the, if you order the property owner to do it, they're going to have to go in there and do that as well to get the items, so I guess that could be something to consider before, if, you know, if we do any abatement action, to maybe have engineering go out there and take a look. We could contact Fish and Game as well to kind of see if there's a best option for the least amount of disturbance to the, to the property, if that's your concern.
I guess what I'm puzzling over, it seems like part of the abatement would be to repair some of the damage that they've done to soil on the site, but I guess not, is what you're saying.
Again, no.
I guess no is no.
Yeah, I mean, you know, what's before you is abatement of what the, you know, the violation at hand, and right now, that's the, you know, what's located on the property. There's, you know, there's no violation in front of you regarding any infringement into the, you know, the drainage areas or creeks on the property.
Okay, so, so just to maybe catch up with what was being said, then, when you go to do the baitment here of what, what the charge is? do the abatement here of what the charge is, what you're saying is that you'll have engineering also take a look at it, and there could be another abatement that comes in regards to that. Is that correct? Based on what engineering comes up with?
Yeah, we could, you know, contact them and have them do a site visit with us, and talk to them about that.
Chairman Moss, if I could, Commissioner Johnson, Tim Wagner, Deputy Director of Building Services over at the Building Department, Head of Code Compliance.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Did you stand up and take an oath before we started this?
I did not do that. I'm glad to do that now.
Would you please?
Certainly.
Sue, read him in, would you?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
It is.
You may be seated. Actually, no, please stand.
Thank you.
So again, Chairman Moss, Commissioner Johnson, appreciate the questions. Again, just to clarify who I am. I'm the Deputy Director, Head of the Building Department, Head of Code Compliance, and also our Cannabis Enforcement Team. But today, particularly with Code Compliance, I will share with you that, yes, we will be cautious about the environment when we go in to provide our extraction of this property, if that's ultimately necessary. My understanding is Fish and Wildlife is involved in this. Estelle Maxwell, the initial officer that was out on site, had, did meet with a Fish and Wildlife officer that was on site one day as well. And so we will not go in there this type of a season when it is this wet. We too would lose equipment in there, so we will be sensitive to that. And I appreciate the fact that you're asking these questions. And so we will be cautious. We will work with Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife correctly. And we will ensure that, once we do remove anything from the property, that we return the property back if we do create ruts or things. And the fact with our activities, that we do make sure that we return the property back to what condition that it was when we arrived.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, before you leave, I think we're probably obviously still concerned, at least I am, and I'm kind of picking that up from Richard as well, concerned about the environmental impacts, even though you remove these vehicles and that mobile home, that there's been some damage done in that area. And is there, I mean, that's not part of the action today, but is there going to be some follow-up on that? Is that something Fish and Game would do to require that the property be brought back to the previous condition or address issues that may be a problem?
So you're right, there is no remediation action with this, right? So we're not going back and making repairs to conditions that we might look back over time to see what that looks like. That's really the work of Fish and Wildlife, is if there's some species, endangered species, or any wildlife that's in that area, and the habitat that's there, that they will make sure that that's either protected or that's returned as part of their action. So we will be certain to have a connection with Fish and Wildlife about what that looks like. But it's not something that we, particularly the Code Compliance Team, would be taking any action on. Now, I do hear your question, and I'm glad to work with planning a little bit further to understand if there's anything else we can do to make sure that the property maintains its natural state.
Well, what we're hearing is, and from the pictures that seem to verify it, that there's been some grading that's been done without a permit, which potentially is, I mean, it's in, could be in violation of county code, so.
Agreed. Just to clarify, the grading you're talking about, is that the culvert discussion?
Well, this looked like they'd actually dug into the hill on some of the pictures in the back.
So I don't know that we have evidence of that. And we did engage our department, Placer County Department of Public Works. Their manager, Kevin Taber, was able to go out with one of his folks and evaluate the culvert location. As you heard earlier, we were able to look at the stability of the slope from the roadway to that seasonal ravine that the culvert was placed in. So DPW has been able to look at that, ensure that the roadway's stable, that there's no any unstable creation by the culvert and those type of things. So generally, DPW was satisfied with that work. And from the photos I've seen over time, I'm not aware that they've actually done grading. I mean, I know that they've grubbed, they've scraped some berry bushes and things. That is very clear by these pictures. But we haven't seen actually where we've had them excavate or do any kind of grading in that way.
All right. Yeah, well, you know, I guess what catches my eye is where the two house trailers, I guess, whatever you call them, house, where they're going to, I guess, we're going to build a house there, apparently with those two.
These are like mobile homes, right?
Yeah. But if you look at it, you know, they're sitting in the mud, and the mud is running by there. And at any rate, to me, that says that there's a problem there in terms of what's happening to the creek down below and the properties down below.
Yeah, I hear you.
And so, at any rate, where, you know, there's clearance like that, and it causes that kind of a problem, I guess I'm wondering if the county gets involved in that, or I guess not.
Well, we engage the proper entities, so Fish and Wildlife, DPW, we've engaged DPW's floodplain administrator as well, to try to understand what this property looks like, its viability of being built on in the future, and those kind of things. So we have done our due diligence, if you will, on this parcel. I guess that's basically all I have to offer at this point in time. So we have done those efforts to try to connect the right resources, where the county itself or my teams aren't the proper entity. We don't have the enforcing authority in some of those areas.
There hasn't really been any mitigation, I guess, if there was damages that we're talking about or looking at.
Right. Understand that.
Okay. Well, I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess if that addresses all the questions, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
I've asked her to put it back up, which is, even though we've got it here. Thank you.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of an abatement order supported by the findings contained in the staff report, order an abate pursuant to conditions contained in the staff report, and authorize the Chair of the Planning Commission to sign the abatement order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Hauckey and a second from Mr. Nader. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Hersthoff?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hauckey?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that closes that. Is the property owner for the Mount Vernon Road property made it to the hearing yet? Okay, maybe we'll take a quick five and, for me, if nobody else had given that much more time.
That note and that phone call occurred over an hour ago. So to the extent that that is involved with this one, they are kind of beyond that timeframe. So just wanted the commission to be aware of that.
And if he shows up before we're done with Marina's presentation, we'll be happy to get him sworn in and give him a shot here.
So Marina Howdy again, with Code Compliance. I'm here in regards to a property at 5845 Mount Vernon Road in Lincoln, California. Property is right here, Lincoln, kind of outskirts. The property is also a zone farm and is 1.4 acres inside. This case was initiated, before the case was initiated, the primary residents on the property suffered fire that left the home uninhabitable. The structure was posted with the dangerous building action, and we will be addressing that with the dangerous building abatement process at that time. So that will be a separate action for the structure on the property. So in June of 2015, a complaint was received in regards to incidental camping at the property. The compliance process was initiated, and after inspections confirmed that there were violations at the property for incidental camping and excessive storage. The owner at the time was a Mr. Richard Huetner, who was also living on the property in a trailer. The property owner was issued several violation notices and was present at two administrative hearings, one in November of 2015 and one in June of 2016, in which violations were affirmed and fines were imposed by the hearing officer. In August of 2016, the property was cleared of most of the debris, and the incidental camping had ceased at that time. In early of February 2017, we received a new complaint for people, again, living on the property. An inspection confirmed that, again, there were people occupying trailers, tents, and sheds at the property. In addition, there was also a marijuana grow at that time, and more debris was being brought back onto the property. In May of 2018, I was able to verify that Mr. Huetner was, again, living on the property in a trailer.
Time's up.
I didn't know it was not attached. So the violations at the property were, are for incidental camping, people living in trailers, tents, sheds on the property as well. Since the primary residents of the property had burned down, there's not an established use anymore. And it's been, at least by this time, four years or so. And so, storage on the property is not allowed as a principal use. They also have vehicles that are not, you know, registered to an owner or that they're storing on the property in addition to that. This is in August 25th of 2015. This is one of our initial inspections at the property. May 3rd. We do go out there with the Sheriff Department, just because, you know, for my safety, I don't usually know who's going to be there. So, and they've had issues with people, you know, being arrested and having warrants come and go from this property. So this was February of 2017, after we had to come back after a new complaint. So you can see that, you know, a couple of years ago, they had most of the debris cleaned. However, they kind of were keeping it a little contained at the time, but there was people living in a trailer. It was a different trailer from the first time that was there. So in October of 2018, the property was sold to Adago Ventures, Inc., and the owner of that is the Mr. Matt Adiego. December 13 of last year, I sent a new notice of violation to the new owner, letting him know, you know, the condition of the property. In December, on December 28, I met with Mr. Matt Adiego on the property to inspect and to talk about bringing the property into compliance at that time. In December, there were three people living on the property that were coming and going, including Mr. Richard Huetner, who was the prior owner. This is May. So here is December. So one of our big concerns is just the sanitation issues with the people coming and going and staying on the property. This was the day that we met the property owner out at the property. So he was there to inspect this. So by January of this year, it didn't seem like the issues were getting better, and there was more people coming and going from the property. There was more debris that was being brought onto the property. There were people living, again, in trailers, as well as the sheds that are on the property. On January 17, I sent a notice of nuisance to the property owner. And by February 20, compliance was not achieved, and so we mailed out to the property owner a notice of nuisance abatement. This past Monday, the 25th, I went out to the property, and there were still people occupying the property in the trailer with multiple vehicles and considerable storage. So this was February 22. There's a man right here who's showering as we were there with the Sheriff Department. They were staying. They were staying in this structure here. So this was on Monday, March 25th. And again, there is a new person who I'd not seen there before on the property. They're not staying in this RV, to be clear, it's just filled with junk and debris. This car was gone at one point, and now it had come back between, sometime between January and Monday, so these two vehicles were gone, and then they appeared again. So at this time, we're asking the Planning Commission to issue, approve and issue an abatement order for the property, supported by the findings contained in the staff report, order an abatement pursuant to the conditions contained in the staff report, and authorize the Chair of the Planning Commission to sign an abatement order. And do you have any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you. I guess we'll take one more shot and make sure that there's no representative from Adiego Ventures or anybody else that would like to...
There was a lady in the audience earlier that was one of the people who was living on the property. She was here, so I don't know, she had left sometime between the, one of the variants of denials and now, so...
See, maybe a question? Does the abatement include the removal of the remains of the house that was burned?
No, that will be handled through the dangerous building action. So that's a separate, the house that's burned is a separate action, which we've already posted and are in the process if the property owner, who also was issued a notice of dangerous building abatement. So he was issued a notice to have the structure demoed, and we're waiting for action on that as well, so...
Okay. So we may see him again then, huh?
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of an abatement order supported by the findings contained in the staff report and order an abatement pursuant to conditions contained in the staff report and authorize the Chair of the Planning Commission to sign the abatement order.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
I have a first by Mr. Howgie, a second by Mr. Hersog, so a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Howkie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I think what we'll do is Commissioners will take about a 15-minute break while our presenters of the next item get a chance to set up and get ready for us.
Okay, we're back at it here for our 12 o'clock item. Close?
Standing.
Yes. Presentation from Alliance for Environmental Leadership on the proposal for Sunset area. We've got about 30 minutes for you.
We spoke. I'd just like to mention that the Alliance for Environmental Leadership is a coalition of 14 civic and environmental organizations that have come together under the Alliance umbrella, thinking that if we together, if we spoke with one voice, we might, we would be stronger in our delivery. And at the request of Commissioner Nader at your last meeting in March, the Alliance for Environmental Leadership was invited to present what the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan is. And one of the caveats in our being here was that we wouldn't be comparing the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan with the Sunset area plan that the county is applicant for, for the purposes of the draft environmental impact report. We're presenting the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan today as a concept, a template for what development might be going forward in this rapidly changing world. So with that, thank you so much, Chair Jeffrey Moss, and the rest of you for giving us this time. Really appreciate it. Yeah, you can just go to the next slide. Our plan for today, as we go through our slides, is to explain the design template, which is having the environmental setting be the paramount driver and how development of any site would proceed. Then looking at that site in its context, what are the adjoining uses and will the project brief complement, enhance the adjoining uses so that the big picture, the whole achieves goals that everyone will be satisfied with. The third step in the template is to look at potential users, and that's just not the users of today. It's looking at the users of the future, and especially in the West Placer area, we're talking about a development plan that has an 80-year life. And if we will look at what's happened with transit, and we looked at what's happened with our cell phones and our computers, even trying to imagine what's happening 80 years out is something that's beyond the capability of even the computers we have today. The final thing is, once we've identified what our users potentially will be, we target those users with design amenities that will make the site build-out work for them. And then finally, the last part of our template, is to quantify the costs, the impacts, and the benefits of site development and make sure that those costs, the impacts, and the benefits are spread fairly across the community. If you take a look at the environmental setting, which is step one in our template, on the right side of the screen, you see the Sunset area plan, plan area outlined in blue. And generally moving across the center of the site on a squiggly red line is the watershed boundary. And a lot of us think of the prairie of West Placer as a flat surface. In fact, there's a ridge line. And north of the red boundary is the Auburn Ravine Orchard Creek watershed, and those are the headwaters where the red line exists. And south of it is the Pleasant Grove and Coon Creek watershed. What's interesting is that property going north, the Auburn Ravine watershed Orchard Creek, Tippitori, Terry, connects with, on the left side of the slide, three, actually four conservation areas that are publicly owned and owned by private conservation organizations that are administering mitigation. In our, the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan build-out, we're careful that the headwaters, so those streams which are so critical to the function of the conservation areas, which are mitigation for off-site projects, aren't compromised. What's unique about the Sunset area plan, and I think unique in the fact that citizens have stepped up to ask the county, which is in essence an extension of the citizenry, to look at this as an opportunity area, but the county is applicant for the vast 10,000 acre site development. It's really an opportunity for the county to capitalize on opportunities that might not be realized when a property, when they're responding to a development plan put forth by a private developer. As such, the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan does look at the constraints of the site and the potential costs of site development and works to address environmental, the environmental setting and the impacts on the environment onsite, as opposed to transferring those costs and the mitigations offsite. Let's see, have I missed anything? Oh. You know, on the site, there's over 7,000 acres of farmland and over 5,000 acres of vernal pools. And I know a lot of you are tired of hearing about the importance of vernal pools. But the reason we bring up the vernal pools is because of the unique characteristics of these Central Valley habitats. And any site development will obliterate vernal pools forever because of the unique clay pan beneath them. And any development on the site will be costly because of the spongy wet nature of the site overall. I'd like to introduce the Alliance for Environmental Leadership's master planner, Genoville Marsh of Agile Architecture, who's the author of the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan.
Hey, everybody. So this map up here is collage of the collective vision for the Sunset area in the middle and approximately two miles surround. It overlays the current general plan for the county, the general plans for the city of Lincoln, Roseville, Rockland, and the Placer County Conservation Plan. And as Leslie mentioned in our template, it's important to look at the surrounding uses around the Sunset area. And in our collective And in our collective vision of tomorrow, we have quite a lot of light yellow, low-density residential zoning. In, in this map extent alone, it's approximately 60,000 acres, most of it single-family homes. And if this type of zoning were allowed into the Sunset area, it would gobble up land that has been set aside for business opportunities and compromise the enhancement of the industrial corridor, which spans from Roseville into the Sunset area to across 65 to Lincoln and even partially, I mean, across 65 to Roseville and even up, up towards Lincoln. The general plan amendment for the Sunset area is being amended for me and my generation to fill in and to work with. And if my generation is going to be attracted to locating our businesses in this part of our county and living in this part of our county, low-density industrial sprawl and low-density residential sprawl is not going to cut it. Instead, we are already locating our businesses and ourselves in proximity to innovation ecosystems. And that may sound like a buzzword, but it is very concrete to me. It's a whole development template summed up in two words. Imagine a college student studying at university and living nearby, interacting in cafes and bars and making friendships with those that live and work in the area, interning at a local business that establishes itself, graduates from university, starts her own business, and can grow that business in that same area so that one day she can accept interns from that university as well. This brief video will further explain.
To find the innovative economy 20 years ago, a worker needed to drive to a secluded research park, work in isolation, and keep ideas secret. Today, proximity is everything. Workers want to be in urban places that are walkable, bikeable, hyper-caffeinated, where they can bump into other workers and share ideas. Firms also want to be close to other firms, research labs, and universities in collaborative spaces so that smart ideas can be turned into smart products for the market. Innovation districts are this century's productive geography. They are both competitive places and cool spaces, and they will transform your city and metropolis.
So these innovation ecosystem districts are geographic areas where there's a leading-edge anchor institution or company, could be a university, that is deliberately clustering and connecting with businesses of smaller scales, including startups, and leveraging collective resources in that community in accelerators and incubators. They also, out of necessity, are physically compact, transit-accessible, and technically wired. And they offer mixed-use housing, office, and retail. So Anders asked us to give some examples of where these exist. And there's 18 cities in the U.S. that are looking at their old industrial parts of town and deliberately re-zoning and replanning them to create innovation ecosystems. Some that are similar to what our opportunity is with the existing industrial area in the Sunset area are happening in cities like Boston, Brooklyn, Chicago, Portland, San Francisco, Seattle. But we do not have one planned in our Sacramento region. We have lots of low-density industrial areas and industrial parks that the Sunset area has to compete with, but no competition for an innovation ecosystem kind of district. The other ingredient that an innovation ecosystem district would need in our region, because we're more suburban, is activated and useful green space. And this is much more than quiet walking paths. This is natural nature, adjoined to park amenities and secondary business fronts, so that people are using and reliant on these green pedestrian corridors multiple times a day. If we take it for a conceptual exercise, a look at placing a university in relation to the innovation ecosystem, we know that we have to firstly cite it to maximize access. And when we maximize access, we increase the amount of businesses and people that can walk in a short distance of time to and from the university. So here in dark blue is 300 acres of university zoning. And it's been located within the innovation district, which is, may I have the pointer? Which is this whole area here. And by doing that, all of a sudden, these become the walking radiuses in and out of the university, which means that now the university is compatible, not just with businesses in the Sunset area, but also with Roseville. And we're catching more of the neighborhood down here and even a little bit of, of Rockland. An additional benefit of putting the university in an area that already has some industrial development is that there's opportunity for adaptive reuse. There's already utilities, and there's already road access. And these are significant cost reductions to kickstarting something as big as a university. And it also makes it so that the university does not have a massive environmental impact fee to pay before breaking ground. If we located the university slightly to the west, in the odor buffer zone for the dump, as has been proposed, $40 million in mitigation fees just for the vernal pool habitat alone would have to be paid from the get-go. That's more than twice the value of the land that the university would be on.
One of our concerns in that connection is the fee structure in connection with elimination of those vernal pools is so high in the Placer County Conservation Plan that were we to go forward with this, something would have to give because the project, one project would not be economically feasible were the other to go forward. So unless we look at the environment as a whole and try to avoid some of the costly environmental impacts, I mean costly not just in terms of environment, but in terms of dollar payment to the PCCP, we risk the economic feasibility of build-out or, in a worst-case scenario, we might jeopardize the Placer County Conservation Plan itself. Looking at our template, at the opportunities and constraints that the site presents, the area in purple is the one-mile buffer zone for the dump that in the 1990s, Placer County went to court to defend because it wanted to protect its investment in the MRF. The areas outlined in blue are grammar school, a middle school, and the proposed university. And I just want to make a correction that staff at the public hearing on the draft EIR stated that those sensitive uses had been pulled out of the smell area. But in fact, they've been pulled out beyond a 2,000-foot reduced smell buffer, not out of the smell buffer area itself, as you can see by the map. The landfill buffer area, if you, if we want to take sensitive users out of that landfill buffer area, which currently is proposed for single-family sprawl and these resident, the industrial, excuse me, the public uses of the universities and the school, our proposal is that we use that for the large corporate campuses that would be employing 1,000 to 2,000 people as envisioned by the county in the current general plan for the Sunset area. Those environments can be controlled, and the smell impacts could be mitigated for those people that are employed in those areas. So our, put me back there. Oh, am I, oh. Our proposal is to move the sensitive users outside of the smell buffer to the east. And as you see in the slide that Genevieve previously presented, we have a comparably sized university site juxtaposed and embedded in the innovation district, which, if you review the objectives that the county put forth from the scoping sessions for the general plan amendment and the EIR, the idea was to have an integrated development plan. So the narrative is to have the innovative development plan in the innovation district. The actual land use doesn't reflect the narrative when you look at how the land uses are currently proposed.
So we know that innovation districts thrive on density. And we have a lot of space in the Sunset area. We could fit five Sacramento downtown grids within the plan area. Warm Springs Innovation District in Fremont, in the Bay, is the same scale as the innovation district that we've identified here. It's approximately 870 acres. And the town circles, which are the core of the residential community, are the yellow dots. And those are approximately 128 acres or a five-minute walking radius. So there's plenty of room to have a very substantially sized, but appropriately sized innovation district. And I'd like to point out what the downtown project is in Las Vegas as an example for how to seed one or how to start one. On 45 acres purchased scattered throughout a neighborhood in Las Vegas, shown here in the green and yellow squares, a developer invested $200 million in real estate and then $150 million in small businesses and an annual arts festival. And just a few years on, it's created 1,500 jobs. And every year and a half is generating the initial investment of $300 million. So that's super successful, very high value in a small amount of space. Market-rate affordable housing exists in Placer County. We just don't have the supply that corresponds to the need. The average house price seen in the top line is 30%, 34% higher than what our affluent families in the region we're discussing can afford. What they can afford is a house that is $35,000, $350,000. On the left, you see the breakdown of what income equates to median income and low income. And when we look at the average sales price for condos in Lincoln, we see that that becomes achievable for our affluent to low-income groups. And if we look at the multifamily products being offered countywide, that, that price is represented in the pink line. And so at that point, we're getting down to our very low-income group. What's fascinating to me is that when there's a multi-tenant housing product on the market, it goes on average in 13 days for $45,000 more than the asking price. So that is demand. In our analysis of the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan, incorporating a variety of multi-tenant housing products dramatically increases the job-housing balance to one to three versus the Sunset area plan, which is one to 22. And it has lots of other positive effects as well, like improving housing stock in that two-mile radius, making work more accessible so people aren't commuting for more than half an hour, gives us more job capacity, and also a higher quality of life.
With the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan or any other plan that would be implemented in the Sunset area, there's going to be changes to the ecosystem. This slide going from left to right is interesting because it looks at the existing habitat residents. And it looks at, you know, as development progresses, how, what residents, what resident, this happens to be bird species, stay and what bird species, what species will be replaced by other species. We think that the species that are displaced can move somewhere else when in fact, nature is in balance. And were they to move somewhere else, they're going to be displacing another species of their kind. So the progression equates to mortality. And that's something, that's something inevitable with development. Oops. Yeah. Excuse us. Okay. But we believe that regardless, site design should drive the development plan, not property ownership. We should design to maintain ecosystem services at the same time as we grow. And inasmuch as the board of supervisors, all of us as citizens are the applicant on this project, we have an opportunity, we have an opportunity to try to preserve the ecosystem services on the site as, in a way that we, we wouldn't if it was a private applicant for this project. And the ecosystem services are water retention, rather than providing them offsite, carbon sequestration, rather than adding to our CO2 load, and preservation of the vernal pools and the endangered species that occupy them. Our, our development template with the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan delivers the intensity, the jobs generation, the corporate growth, the primary wage earner jobs that Placer County has stated is there, is the objective. But it does that in a way that supports the workers that will be occupying those jobs. And it does so in a way that the ecosystem services that the site delivers naturally are utilized to reduce development costs overall, instead of transferring those costs offsite, which is overall more costly to the environment and to citizens of the county.
So this is our open space plan, where we use three different types of zoning to establish different types of open space and preserve those natural ecosystem amenities that Leslie mentioned. And it also happens to determine what we see as the buildable area of the site and the not-buildable area of the site. And all of our habitat preservation at the north, as well as this, the urban recreation district not being considered habitat preservation, is backed by the science that has gone into the PCCP because there's quite a lot of research for the Western Prairie. Interesting example, a big aha moment for me relating to this slide is that the is that the grassland species are super sensitive. You put a telephone pole out there and half of the birds disappear. And so instead of designing habitat conservation practices where the birds are just simply not going to be there, do something that works with the species that are remaining and will be coming in. So in our presentation, we've honored the constraints put upon us, which does not deplete my desire to show you the moves and the benefits and the details of the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan. And so if any of you would be interested in meeting one-on-one to go through that, I, I would be really delighted.
As would I. And these are funded by grant writing from the Alliance for Environmental Leadership. We've been able to hire Genevieve to produce these plans, which do have resource information that is compatible in some ways, but also deeper and, and different than that which the consultants at the county has hired over the past two years to produce the Sunset Area Plan. It's just interesting to note that we've been able to produce this for under $11,000 and the county's costs are $6 million and counting. But I, these are available, available to you and we'd be happy to share them with you. And as Genevieve said, be delighted to meet with you, to discuss them. Just in terms of our discussion about the environment, I wanted to just mention that under the county's plan, there would be 17,000 permanent residents in the Sunset area. And in the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan, 54? The permanent residents in the area would be 54,000 people. So just in terms of the growth that's anticipated and accommodating the workers that will be on this very vital site, vibrant site, we deliver it with the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan in a very livable way. We have a lot of our work, excuse me, a lot of our work on the vernal pool and that ecosystem out in the Sunset area was aided by John Walmar Consulting of Berkeley. And John's willing to come up to take us out on the site and discuss the soils, the vernal pools, the water flow. And if any of you would like to attend that field trip, we'd be happy to organize it between the dates of April 10th and 15th, if it's possible. So I know we can take at least two of you at a time, but I think when we're looking at a project of this scope, we're talking about something that's comparable to the size of Roseville, again, in our county. 800,000 vehicle trips, new vehicle trips a day on our roads. We should at least go out and see the site to know what we're talking about before we make some of these very, very big decisions. Anyway, appreciate your time and we are here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Leslie or Genevieve?
Actually, just, I wanted to thank you for providing more detail than what was in the plan previously. And EJ, for the planning staff, as they have done, I find it very helpful when you're talking about affordable housing, you know, the income levels. And also it'd be kind of nice to know, okay, who is in that income level? Is that a teacher, firefighter, police officer, clerk at a store? Just to put it into perspective, the kind of housing we're looking at, I looked at those numbers and I, I can guess, but it'd be kind of nice to know, you know, what does a clerk make? And I noticed, you know, that lowest income category, actually, I believe if you're on various assistance levels, you're probably at or above that lowest category. So anyways, helpful for me in understanding kind of the facts. And, and I do appreciate you adding in the facts and talking a bit more about the innovation ecosystem with some facts. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I guess at this point, if there's any members of the public who would like to comment, we will allow them to do so. We'll deal with a, a three-minute timer, as is typical. When you, when you see the yellow light go off, that's your, your one-minute warning to kind of wrap things up. Sue, could we maybe put that light, that timer up to where the, those speaking can, can see it?
Thank you. I'll try not to knock it over. Thank you. My name's Cheryl Burkema. I live in Greenwich Bay. And I am very concerned about our environment, even locally, that we seem to be heading in the direction of taking out thousands of oak trees at a time. And I think that looking at alternatives like this that respect not only the environment, but solve problems at the same time. Coming from someone that, I, I think Genevieve hit it on the, on the head when she said, "We expect the next two, two, three generations to pay for this, to have to live with this solution." And so I think it's really important to look at the types of needs and the types of environments that people want to live in. I think Genevieve did a lot of homework too with Leslie on looking at other communities. And I did mention before that, that looking at success rates in other communities, to have Placer County on the map and to be a place, we already know people want to come live here. It's how they're going to live here. And so that, we know that we have Bay Area transplants that are moving in. Do we want to see our community have those high, the lowest density, highest income? Where are people going to live? Plus Tahoe, we already have that problem. We already, we've already experienced it. Why do we want to build that problem again? We, we need to have a place where people can work and live and not be on the, on the streets all the time. And I think that this actually serves that purpose. And I hope that, I hope that people will meet more often with Genevieve and Leslie in the Alliance to try and come to some, some way that, that it's a novel idea to have citizens actually approach something. But I think it's also a gift to, to be able to say, "We have people that have spent their life and working on these types of solutions, and we're being offered that now." And I think that, I think it's innovative and I think that we have an opportunity to do something innovative in Placer County. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Angela Torrance from the city of Rockland. I've looked at this innovation plan and followed some of the work that AAL has been doing. And I also extract some of my experience as a housing policy analyst with the Department of Housing and Community Development. You know, during my time in my professional career, I noted that many, many, many hundreds of times when I looked at general plans and housing elements, I noticed that a lot of cities, who are not only innovative and successful in supplying the affordable housing and the required housing in their area, as well as achieving that jobs-housing balance, and then much more so protecting this really supreme, very pristine environmental areas that we have in Placer County, it really brings us to the, a higher level, a higher challenge that, that we can with the tools that we have now and with the other cities and towns that have done the same, as well as those cities that have been named to be out of state, can help you achieve the various types of balances and goals that you might want to achieve in this plan. I just hope that you'll take the time to consider the alternatives and also to look to other alternatives that are available in the state. But I do hope that you will, most of all, preserve the environment here in Placer County and the beautiful areas and pristine lakes and creeks, watershed, Pacific Flyway, and natural resources that we've been able to hold on to. That makes us a very, very, very unique place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Deanna Marsh and I'm a board member of Protect the American River Canyon, lovingly known as Park. Sure you're familiar with it. And I'm here just to underscore the previous speaker's comments. Park is a member of the Alliance because we believe that with thoughtful planning and development, we attract people to our county who also will take care of the rest of the environment here. We want visitors to the Auburn State Rec area who take care of it and, and want to preserve the environment there. And this is a best practices opportunity to bring in community growth that supports the way we're living now and, and taking care of our canyon and river system and encourages the new people coming in to do the same. So thank you for considering this idea.
Anybody else?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. George Phillips here on behalf of Placer Ranch, Inc. Holly Teich with Placer Ranch, Inc. is also here this afternoon with me. Certainly, very provocative ideas and concepts in this alternative that's being proposed and to try to keep it in that more generic context of planning principles versus site-specific. You know, obviously, we have some concerns as the owner of a major portion of the Sunset area. And we will be meeting with Leslie and Genevieve here in the next couple of weeks to have a more direct dialogue on their ideas and concepts. But just to, just throw out some fundamental concerns. One is we are concerned about some of the numbers in here, especially as it relates to the cost of the PCCP. Our calculations that have been done in concert with the county are extremely different and orders of magnitude off. Ours being much lower, theirs being much higher. So I'm hoping that their calculations are in error versus ours because if, if our, if theirs are right, there won't be any development up here because no one will be able to afford the PCCP. The other issue is, is balance. Certainly, this is pointing in a direction of much higher density, as, as Genevieve mentioned. The concern there is, we have to take into account its location. There are 49,000 units in their proposal. And from the table in the, in their materials, it talks about a population of 84,000. We may have that off, but 49,000 units, that's a lot of density. And is that appropriate for this location? This is an aspirational plan, I think. So it begs the question, what do we aspire to? And is that what Placer County wants to be or not? And of those 49,000 units, zero are single-family detached. So from a balanced perspective, is that a balanced plan? I think we'd also love to know too, the contributors to the plan because the, it's composed of a lot of reports, or at least it's referred to as reports, water use report, energy use report, transportation report, emissions report, conservation carbon report, accessibility walk, walk report, household cost report, conservation water report, conservation habitat report, conservation ag report. And we'd very much like to know, and decision-makers would like to know, who are all the contributors? What's the expertise that's been lent to this product to lead to this product? Because there's a lot of data in there, in here. Where's that come from? What are those calculations based upon? Are they based upon real-world experiences, real-approved projects, real-developing projects? And then just the last thing that we'll point out, and this is site-specific, but it kind of, it hits us right between the eyes, so to speak. The university campus that's shown is partially on and partially off the Placer Ranch property. Obviously, the Placer Ranch proposal involves donating 300 acres to Sac State. We can't donate land that's not on our property, that we don't own. And how that would ever be incorporated into a similar circumstance to be attractive to Sac State to come and locate when they're not receiving that property as a gift, which is the plan here. So ours are more on kind of feasibility issues of these densities, appropriate locations, balance of units, and more than anything else, economic feasibility of the ability to fund the infrastructure to build a project that can be, everyone can be proud of and a community that people would want to live in and bringing a, a major university to South Placer County. Those are our concerns. We'll again, continue our dialogue with the proponents, but just food for thought from our perspective. Thank you.
I want to thank you, George, for meeting with them. And Leslie, I had asked you to do the same thing. So I, you know, the, the landowners, the applicants, the businesses, the developers are the ones who build our communities, not the county. So I really would like to see you guys get together and find out what works, what doesn't work. And, and, you know, then come to the commission with some of those recommendations where there can be innovation, there can be reaching some of these goals, but also make it, make it real, you know, because it costs. And so how to, how to fund it. So that's important to me.
Anybody else hasn't spoke that would like to speak? With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And I know there's no action to be taken. So unless any of the Commissioners have any comments, meeting adjourned.